Okay, welcome to County Board of Supervisors Thursday, February 24th. I call the meeting to order. Clerk, do we have receipt of evidence?
Yes. The County Board Supervisors February 22nd meeting notice and agenda was posted in the Government Center Building in two places. Posted on the county website on February 11, 2022 was published on legal newspaper the week of February 14, 2022. In addition, on Friday, February 11th, 2022 at 7:04 PM, the Office of the County Clerk distributed copies of such notice of meeting to supervisors and media via email or mail. The notice of amended agenda was posted in the Government Center, posted on the county website, and copies of such notice of meeting were distributed to the supervisors and media via email on Friday, February 18, 2022. A notice to reschedule this February 22nd County Board meeting until Thursday, February 24th. Expected inclement weather was posted in the Government Center, posted on the county website, and copies of such notice were distributed to supervisors and media via email on Monday, February 21st, 10:50 AM.
Does this constitute proper notice?
Yes.
Go call.
Brad Olden. Doug Roddy.
Here.
Steve Warndall.
Here.
Chris Nelson.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Dan Rock.
Here.
Mike Richard. Sharon Kelly.
Here.
Kim O'Connell.
Good.
Amy Middleton. Jay Luke.
Here.
Fran Dunkinson. Russ Arcand. John Bonner Price. And Joe Demeling.
Yeah.
Clerk Fran Dunkinson did say she may be missing tonight, so she should be excused.
Yep, and I think Russ Arcand.
Russ Arcand is excused.
We have 13.
Stand up, do our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just wanted to make comment to, our thoughts are with John Bonner Price right now as he's going through some medical issues and just want to say we're thinking about you, John. Five disclosure of conflicts of interest, bring it up. At the appropriate time, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm in.
You have a second. Any discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Carrie. Matters offered for adoption of consent agenda. A consideration corrections to the published minutes from January 18th, 2022 County Board Meeting. E confirmation of appointments. 2021 Emergency Fire Warden Wolf Creek Barr. And Gene Smith and Mike. Scotter. And Sundown Spoon Bar and Grill, Ronaldo. We have a motion to approve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment, do we have any public comment?
Nope, there's no one up here.
No public comment?
Nope.
Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll move on.
Yes, if you're sitting online.
I don't do online public comment, alright? That's why our services that does public comment are lying. Kind of, I think this is handed out. One of the things I asked too was, and it got struck out, we changed a little bit, was, you know, and I think it's important as a county board that we do acknowledge at the end of our terms what our accomplishments are. I also reached out to records and leadership. And I think we're.
Yeah, yeah.
Excuse me, whoever's got background noise on your mic, you want to leave the room or turn your mic off, please, because we can all hear it. So, I think it's important, so what I did ask staff to do, staff will be here next month. And we're going to ask the leadership and staff to kind of highlight their accomplishments because county staff and employees of the county do a lot of things that aren't resolution driven. And so we're going to allow that opportunity for, tell the public what are our accomplishments during the last term. And what you guys have here is a copy of resolutions and they're kind of put together. I just wanted all the county to have that, I wanted the newspapers and those people also to have that information because I think it's important that we look at what our accomplishments were. And I'll just leave it at that, no one can look at it, it's out there. I'm going to move on from that. Number 10, proposed resolutions ordinance and other per action. So the first one, A, Resolution 08-22, Resolution urging state elected officials to use expected 2021-2023 budget surplus to fund rural fire and ambulance emergency services. That has been brought forward. We need two thirds of a vote to bring it to the floor because it did not go through committee and it was time sensitive. So, we put it on the agenda. Supervisor Olson did go to executive committee, did give us a heads up on what was happening. And I don't know if we, we need to take a two thirds vote right now, even have discussion on it, is that what you, to bring it to the floor? So I'm looking for a motion and a second. Or do we vote first, or do we, do I take the motion?
Motion and a second to bring it to the floor.
To vote two thirds?
Yep.
Okay, so I do need a motion.
Oh, move, second and Jay Luke.
Can we have discussion, or do we actually now require the two thirds vote?
You can have discussion about whether or not to bring it to the floor or committee, but you couldn't have a discussion on underlying resolution itself.
Okay, so, do we, do we want to just take a, a roll call vote now to allow it to be discussed and voted on? Would you guys be comfortable with it, or do you want to hear a little bit about it first?
Yeah.
Can't hear it?
You've got to do the press.
Okay, so I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Starting with Amy Middleton.
This is the voted up or down before we had discussion, or just devoted to just?
Just so that we can't discuss it.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Jay Luke?
Yes.
Fran Dunk, Fran is not here, sorry.
Oh, it is. That might have.
It was Dylan.
Oh, gotcha. John Bonner Price, is he? Joe Demeling?
Yeah.
Brad Olson?
Yes.
Yes.
Steve Warndall?
Yes.
Dan Rock?
Yes.
Sharon Kelly?
Yes.
That was a yes?
Yes, it was.
Kim O'Connell?
Yes. And yes.
We have 11.
Okay, so that's me.
So now, we have these two third votes, this is on the quorum that's here, so it's a 13.
Correct, it was a two thirds vote of the whole, just two thirds vote of the quorum.
Of the quorum.
Yeah, okay, so that's in there.
Now we can move on with the discussion. Brad, you want to, and we have a photograph up here. You'll get to that, you know where that's at? Okay.
So, the resolution came about one day, I popped my computer on, and Governor Heavis said he wants to give $150 per person back to everybody with leftover projected surplus. I sit on an ambulance board in Frederick, or fire board in Frederick, I sit on the Northland Ambulance Board. And it's like, I know a better way to spend a portion of that money. And that is by funding ambulance and volunteer fire services around the state. If I didn't sit on those two boards, I wouldn't know the situation that rural fire and rural EMS ambulance services are in. And I just think this is the way to start the ball rolling. You know, send it to other counties, send it to our legislators, send it to the governor. And hopefully, at some point, Madison gets the message that we need help. And realistically kicking $50 head out to those services is going to do a lot more than giving everybody in this room or this county, you know, an extra $50. And from a personal standpoint, I realized what it was worth because Tuesday night, that's my shed. And so it's nice to have two fire departments and 30, 35 fire men or women show up, ambulance services, electric companies in the, in the middle of the night to, put out a whole bunch of burned equipment. But I, I think it's, it's vital, these, these emergency services are running by a threat. The average person on the street does not know the danger that they're in of not having a fire department, not having an ambulance service show up when they need them. And this is just a way to hopefully tell Madison, hey, pay attention, you know, do something wise with some money for once. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there any questions, Jay?
There are no questions? I'd like to make a comment.
What are you saying, Kim?
Oh, I was just going to ask, when was the fire?
Huh?
When was this fire?
At my house?
When?
Oh, Tuesday night.
So it was before, after you already put this in?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So it's after, so you didn't do it to highlight this?
You didn't do it for effect.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
It is your shed, but if you word it, it should be, it was your shed.
Yes. Good deal on truck tractor, manor shredder.
A little dark color, but no more green. The, the comments that, the comments that he made about, about the fire departments, we've got to, we've got to understand, more so now than ever before, that, that these are volunteer, basically volunteer fire departments. They get very little remuneration at all and, and not a lot of recognition for the accomplishments that they, that they, that they do. The, I, my township pays about half of the Amory Fire Department or more to keep that afloat. Also on the board for the Amory Ambulance Service. And we're in the process now of merging, or at least considering mergers with the Northern Ambulance Services up through the, the north part of, of the county and, and into Burnet County, actually. But, and it's, it's a changing world. The Amory had a, had an incident, or they had three incidents one night without a response from first responders. And that's just been unheard of. The enthusiasm is going down, the participation is going down. We're losing, we're going to be losing some services. We've got to make approaches, a little different approach to our, our thinking on, on these emergency services. There will be, in the future, in this area, a full-time, full-time service people to answer your, your calls. It'll start out small, of course, but there'll be 24-hour services coming, it's going to be necessary. And we're going to have to, we're going to have to put more, more effort and money into our emergency services. It is, it is short on money, it's getting shorter. And we should, I, at least, you know, like we're talking about, notifying the state or at least bringing it to their attention. I hope they start considering the fact that we're, we're, we're having problems up here and it's going to get a lot worse. We want to, if we want to maintain a good emergency services, we're going to pay for it, one way to do it. I'm all for this proposal, Kim.
Any other comments, Mr. Warndall?
Well, we're in need of changing, upgrading our pump right now and pushing fire department. And it's a minimum of $550,000 to $750,000 for one truck. That's your main truck that will pump all your water. So we're trying to find ways to rehab ours, something that will work better for us instead of buying new. The other thing is, as the county expands its recreational adventures, the fire department gets called more. And so we get more calls, of course, with COVID, we had a lot of calls for that. And so any money that could come into those departments to help with the costs that we've entailed. Most fire departments raise their own money for a lot of stuff now. You know, through fundraisers and stuff. We're getting burned out. I fully support it.
Any other questions? No, I, I appreciate Supervisor Olson bringing this. I think, you know, these are educational moments for the county to hear these stories. And, you know, maybe it's worthwhile for some of you guys that understand this is to, when we get the next chunk of ARPA money, maybe talk about trying to find a way that the county can help these units out too, so just a thought. No, any further discussion?
Just, just, just another comment, I mean, we all, we all got the letter that was sent out to us, the public comment from every fire department in this county, all of the ambulance services. I've never talked to a number of people who were so happy of, of what was going on, that they, that the recognition for the need was, was there. And nobody was on the phone saying, yeah, we really don't, you know, we really don't need this. Everybody was, yes, we, we do need it, so it's a start.
And, and can you tell the intent of what we're going to do after tonight if this passes our board with this resolution?
It'll go to every county. Number of fire departments are ready to send it to all of the state fire associations. Send out to all of the fire departments in the state and ambulances is the same way. I've talked to firefighters from other counties who are just waiting to get the word to call their county board supervisor to say, you know, your county board chair, your clerk, or whoever has it, let's go. So, you know, the, the ultimate goal is to, of, of course, make something pass, but to get enough counties behind it for lobbying resolution for WCA to get behind it. I've talked to the Towns Association President or Executive Director, to get some towns behind it. Townies will be, or the Towns Association will be behind it. So, it's not, again, of not knocking on the door in Madison, but hopefully kicking it down.
Okay, let's have a vote. We need, just take a voice vote, all in favor by saying.
We have a roll call, I think, because we need two thirds.
No, you only need a simple majority.
On this one?
We have the two thirds to get it.
Okay.
Good, you okay with the, just the voice, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Pass unanimous. Resolution 06-22, Resolution Accepting the Donation of Medical Equipment to the Polk County Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Why?
Thank you. This is a fantastic opportunity for the county. The Franz and Bank and Trust, working with our Communications Director Jill Stoffel, were able to put this together. The Lakes Area Ambulance Service is also a vital part of this, they're going to supply training. But the Franz and Bank is going to donate $54,000 to us to put D-FIBs in all of our vehicles. And that's, that buys 36 defibrillators and every deputy at my sheriff's car will have one. It's, it's a life-saving device that can really make a difference. And oftentimes, you know, these deputies are out all over the county and can get to these calls very quickly. So, I'm really appreciative, Jill, Jill's worked for years to try to get this. And for years, we've never even had any medical equipment in our squad cars. And through some of the military, if you remember, I brought in some of those medic kits that we carry. So every car now has a medical bag. And now with a D-Fib in the car, we really have some tremendous opportunities to do life-saving and life-changing activities. So, I would ask for your support for this. We plan on doing a big press release when we purchase these. And Franz and Bank and Trust, they could have supplied just the patrol vehicles, which would have been about 20. And then we said, but our total fleet would be about 36, and they chose to go with the higher numbers. So, it's really nice to have people that are that generous and willing to help their community.
Um, is there any discussion where we take a vote on this, about this resolution?
I can attest. When I was in Wyoming last year, I had to do CPR on a person. Wouldn't have been for the deputy in Johnson County, Wyoming, getting there with that D-Fib. I don't think anyone would have made it.
It's, it's a vital part. We are now all certified in CPR at the sheriff's office. That's something we started four years ago. And now adding this tool is really going to make us effective if we get an emergency call like that. And it, and it does happen. And we're the ones that are out there oftentimes in the right place at the right time.
Thank you, thank you, Jill. Alright, I'll take a motion to, we got a motion, we got a second. No further discussion, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Just saying, Carrie, thank you guys very much. Presentation regarding, C is a presentation regarding local broadband. Chad is going to actually do the presentation. Chad will introduce, we have a couple of people here that can help answer questions.
Just going to do a short presentation about the resolutions before you. I've got Joe Kremm in the owner of Star Wire here. And then Cliff Albertson, our broadband consultant. Joe, if you have any questions regarding, you know, local provider perspective or for any technical questions. There are a few letters of support from the local providers that I think are on your desk. So, just briefly, we've talked about it, but just the rehashed benefits of broadband. It reduces the barriers to healthcare for rural areas for disabled people, vets, people who lack transportation. All those are things that our county faces. We know that, we know we have a transportation issue. We know we have disabled, we have vets that need healthcare. It brings in a new level of healthcare. Opportunities for education for children and adults. We're not closely situated to a university, it's an hour drive to go sit in class. COVID, you know, a lot of our school systems faced a lot of troubles with broadband access when they went remote because some of our, our school systems, because don't have broadband available. Well, as for telecommuting, we're a broadband-forward community, you guys did that back in 2017. But be broadband-forward is tell people, we want you to bring your families here, come live here, pay taxes here, eat at our restaurants, be part of our community. They also have to be able to work, they don't have broadband, if they can work remotely, they can't live here. So how do we telecommute forward? Increased property value, so there's a Carnegie Mellon study back in 2015 that's about the most recent. 3.1% is the average value that broadband adds to a property. So for every $100,000 value house, in your house, that's $3100. $300,000 house, $9300 in value. Gives local businesses a means to be more competitive. Whether you get your data faster, whether you can have your meetings and not have to travel, you can talk to your suppliers, promote workforce, it's a lot of advantages for businesses. 86% of Americans rely on internet service five days a week. That was a Pew Research study back from February 2021. 80%, 86% of people nationwide rely on internet at least five days a week. And then it's the overall improvement in quality of life, which is what our vision statement talks about, improving the quality of life for citizens. So why are we presenting the resolution? In 2020, when you guys set your priorities, the top four priorities, parks and trails, substance abuse prevention and reduction, public safety, broadband connectivity. Our job as staff to work towards fulfilling the mission of serving the county board priorities, bringing ideas, bringing solutions, you know, directing our staff to satisfy those priorities that you guys set for us. We have several areas still underserved with broadband access. We all know people who don't have broadband at their house, who can't get broadband. We have a big swath of our county that don't have it. It was a specific designation of the original ARPA funds. I know we have lost revenue that came out after, and then the 10 million came out after that. There were four initial pillars to the ARPA. COVID response, premium pay, water infrastructure, and broadband infrastructure. And that was what the legislation was intended for. So, because our job is to work towards county board priorities, one thing we've been working for is how do we serve the priority of broadband access? So we looked at different options, we looked at different ways counties are doing it. And assistance with matching funds for grant opportunities is one of the viable options that we came up with presenting to you guys. It was how the resolution came about. There's presently $100 million in broadband expansion grants from the state budget through the public safety commission that will be awarded after March 17th. There was $100 million last year from ARPA funds specifically. In the state budget, there's $100 million in this biannual budget. Prior to that, over an eight-year period, they only had $72.4 million in the state budget. So there's one more chunk of money coming out. There are $400 million in applications that are going in for that $100 million. So, one out of four is going to get the money. Grant applications, and on these, matching funds are not required, but they're considered, they're what's called a priority thing. And Joe might be able to explain more if you have a question about that. But with priorities, any grant you do with federal grants, with state grants, you have a scoring system. If it's a priority topic, it means you get additional points. If you don't have it, your score goes down. And grants are based solely on what you score at the end of the grant. How well you write the grant, how will you meet the criteria, what things you're bringing to the table in the grant. Grant applications with matching local government funds get priority scoring, they get additional scoring. And as I said, the grant submissions are due by March 17th. So this idea was brought to Vince and I, I think maybe about two months ago, we met with providers. We started looking at what other counties were doing, and we pulled this together to present to you guys tonight because of the deadline. So what does the resolution do? Designates, as written, it designates $1.5 million of the ARPA funds for broadband expansion. Provides a possible mass of up to 15%, but not exceed 300,000 for one of the Public Service Commission grants, $100 million that I discussed. So if somebody has a $3 million grant, it matches 300,000, which equals 10%, but it wouldn't exceed the 300,000. If somebody has a, you know, million dollar grant, it wouldn't extend, exceed 3% of the, or 10% of the million dollars. So it wouldn't get the 300,000. Provides a possible local grant map with the same limits, local provider. Meaning if we had providers put in five public safety grants, only two of those grants were awarded, and there was still grant money available, then local grants could become an option. And we could look at providing local grants to providers. We identified, we want you to go into these areas, serve these communities, work on broadband there. Requires, it provides funds to educate and promote broadband and possible opportunities to help with access for citizens. What are those opportunities? That's to be explored, there's ideas out there like, you know, helping offset the cost of running the line from the road to the house. If the citizen pays for it, do we give them X number of dollars reimbursed? Is it low income or a short period of time, do you give them X number of dollars for broadband service to them on? Requires the county administrator to spring grant applications. So the county administrator would look at any of the applications that the provider brought to them and say, does this meet the priorities of the county? Does it serve an underserved identified area? How many people does it affect? How many schoolchildren does it affect? What's the benefit of the grant overall? And then if the county administrator thinks that they're valid, and it requires. And then if the county administrator thinks that they're valid and it requires the county administrator to present any recommended grants to the general government committee. And they would have the authority to say, yes, you can match that grant. No, you cannot. Under the statutes, you know, you concede monetary authority and we do in most cases to the general government. But the administrator couldn't say, I'm going to match this grant. He says, yeah, that one, we agree with. And as I said, it requires approval by the general government committee prior to awarding any kind of the grant. But it doesn't tell the administrator, you've got one point five million dollars, spend it the way you want. Tells the administrator, this is what we want you to look at. These are the parameters. You do the labor, bring it to us. We'll set the. Because I like short presentations, that's the end of it. So, yes, sir.
Anything would just come back to the general government and not to the full board.
As it's written, yes.
As it's written. Pretty much it's written pretty loosely, so it would go pretty much anywhere. So it's guaranteed to be spent.
Well, I mean. If the general government committee said yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's guaranteed to be spent is what we're saying.
It's guaranteed to go before the general government. It depends how it's going to be spent or not.
That line thirty-one. Are these ARPA funds? Are the, how are the ARPA funds if we put them in our general fund as lost revenue?
Even in the general fund, these are ARPA funds. These are lost revenue, but these have to be classified as ARPA funds and I have to track them and report them through twenty twenty-six. And they have to be reported as they're spent. Just because they go to the general fund, they still have to be listed as ARPA funds. I still have to report them.
But did that, by putting it in there, did that not take off the restrictions of the first?
It takes off most of the restrictions, but they're still designated.
It's considered lost revenue. So we considered it as a county as lost revenue.
Right.
But it's, that was money that we got that we were going to lose. So I'm trying to say that that. We're trying to give money away that we didn't have. Or wouldn't have got. I mean, it's 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 general fund money with the strings attached on the dash so that they're not ARPA funds. ARPA funds has strings attached.
There are ARPA funds in a sense, you still have to account for them as ARPA funds. You still have to report to the feds as ARPA.
But we took it out of that to be able to spend it whatever we want.
Well, we we said, we'll recognize that as lost revenue. We still have to report it as ARPA.
Okay.
Yeah, that that never changes.
It's all right, but it still was lost revenue.
Right.
Okay, so it isn't like it's extra money or anything else. It was lost revenue, was it not? Is what I'm trying to get.
Lost revenue by their standards. We we actually saw more revenue, but by their standards, it's lost revenue.
Oh, gosh.
So as you recall, we actually put money back into the general fund. Um, but by the federal standards, it was lost.
I have any other questions before we uh have a motion on this? Is there any questions, Amy?
Do you have the resolution in front of you?
I do.
Okay, can you just, um forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, are we saying there? That if we have a big state grant, that any leftover money from that will go to our county um grant system?
No, what we're saying is, uh, say you had five local service providers put in for federal grants. Only two of them get awarded. So out of that one point five million, only six hundred thousand is committed or whatever amount. So you have that excess, you could then provide a localized grant to a local service provider and say, we want you. You know, okay, you're going this way. We'll match up to fifteen percent of it from these funds, but we want you to do this.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Up to that one point five.
Well, up to, for any one grant, it would still be up to the fifteen percent or three hundred thousand dollars.
But we could have several of them to hit that one point five ultimately.
Exactly. Yes.
Any questions either to the provider or to Cliff over there too that have specifics to. You know, these guys know it's their business. They know what's going on too with. There's been a lot of questions I know come to the county board chair about this resolution. So hoping some of those questions could get answered tonight by these guys. Kim.
How much has already been allotted to these local providers? From two thousand fourteen to what, the PSC has given out how much? You guys have, how much have you received already?
How much has has my company received or just in general?
No, yours alone.
I, I want to say over the last five rounds of grants, maybe a million dollars total.
Okay. And your area, do we have areas that you've covered? Did you cover those areas that were, did you have, are you Star Wire?
Yes, yep.
So you had Clam Falls, north, you had three back two thousand fourteen to what, nineteen, you had what, three good-sized ones?
Uh, just uh, just in, so in the the very last round, uh, we got one to cover. A part of Indian Creek area, north end of McKinley Township. In the round before that, we did get three, one to to finish the rest of Clam Falls, uh, one for the. For remaining part of Rain Township and one for out in the West Sweden area.
I have a question on that. Um, would you have been able to do those projects without the grant money?
Absolutely not. No, with with the cost of running the fiber and, you know, the low density being profitable on this. There's no way as a small provider would do it. And in the last year too, we've we've been lucky enough to receive a lot of these, a handful of these grants. Things have changed a little bit. There are counties and townships that are putting their ARPA money into these, so. It's becoming more competitive. So just because we got, uh, we're awarded funds in the prior rounds. It's less likely for us to receive this round and moving forward without additional. Participation and partnership with the counties and townships.
Are you getting uh participation with the townships?
We we are getting participation with the townships, but their their funds are much more limited than many townships. We're talking tens of thousands of dollars total ARPA funds. So while it's enough to help, it's not the impact that the county can have.
Still, the other providers, how much did they get in what areas also?
Lakeland has received a handful in the Eureka area.
Cliff, would you be able to know more in Polk County? What Polk County uh telecommunications people have gotten for grants?
Northwest and uh Lakeland uh have done. Quite a bit. I don't have the exact numbers. But one thing that Joe mentioned a second ago is a small provider would not be able to do it. The large system service providers haven't put a dime in there. That's the real problem. Areas that are not served in this county are from the large system providers that haven't done anything. And gentle people like Joe is out there in Sarah, building and bringing broadband to the county. And you have an opportunity to do broadband border to border. Your vision statement says it. And over there, your Polk County slogan, Polk County.
Yeah, I think the question was, was, the question was though is. How much dollars have come to Polk County through the grant process in the last few years? We won providers a million of. You know what that number is?
I do not know the exact number, but it is over a million. So it's several million dollars collected here.
Other questions? Steve?
Yeah, so you're saying that private individuals, uh, my daughter, for example, wanted to have it run a quarter mile from State Highway eighty-seven to their house. None of the other people on that road, just three other people. They don't want it, so they told her five thousand dollars. Are you saying that people like that will be able to buy, uh, help ban for that?
Well, I mean, that is, you know, as Vince and I discussed this over the past few months. One of my things is how do we, there's, there's two accessibilities, getting the fiber run, the companies who run the fiber. And how do we get the people to the lines and and how do we break down those accessibility walls? The one idea, and I had it, it may not be a good idea, is if it costs seven hundred dollars for somebody to run. From their house to the line of the road, if that's what the provider is going to charge them. If they pay for it and then bring in their verification they paid it, does the county reimburse them thirty percent out of this money? Offset their cost after they pay for it. That's just, that's just one of the ideas where you could go with the direct-to-consumer type.
So can we get, are there any of the supervisors that are on telephone or online that have questions? Let's try to. Doug, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, not at this time. No.
I also want to recognize Mike Pritchard. Looks like he's attending the meeting now. Mike, do you have any uh questions for Chad? All right, Sharon, you still with us? John, you with us? All right. All right, so uh, that's the presentation. We need a motion before there be any amendments or any other discussion. Then we need a motion. To uh bring resolution number oh seven dash twenty-two to the floor. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Sure. We have a second, second by supervisor Olson. We have first and second. Uh, any discussion about this, supervisor Olson?
So a couple of issues I have with it is, one is the one point five million. Um, we're looking at spending money that that we don't even have yet. And I'm concerned about that. Um, I get it, the second half of the ARPA money is coming, but we've got a million and change. Left in it. And so that that concerns me. And then I guess a couple of things. I can make a motion to amend now, right?
Certainly can.
So line fifty-three. Uh, says from this allocation, uh, remaining funds from this allocation shall be used for broadband. I would like to make a motion to. Turn that into may because. With shall, we have no option but to spend that one point five million dollars. And we want you to just say, we're going to spend it no matter what. You know, because it can't even come back into the general fund with shall in there. It has to be spent on broadband. Um, you know, I, I don't think we're going to get five grants. I don't think it's going to always spend no matter what. Um, but I don't, I don't think we just put one point five million dollars. To be spent. So that's mine.
That's one. You're going to put them all together and vote them as one whole, or you want to do them one at a time?
Uh, let's do them one at a time.
All right, is there a second amendment? Second. Um, any other discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie.
Mr. Chair, just so you know, I have a working copy and every time something passes, I will update my working copy and email it to the department.
Okay, so we can have a, you can explain to us at the end what this whole thing have to do with. All right. There's more?
Yeah, there's more.
There always is.
So and maybe I'm just reading it wrong, but we've got money left over and local providers come to us.
For yet.
Uh, sixty-one through sixty-five.
Okay. Be it for the resolve?
Yeah, so it's, it's, the administrator is going to go to general government and that's it. They would make the call. But at what point is it coming back into the general fund if it is spent? Because now it just may be spent. So. And I'm not saying I've got an amendment. I'm just kind of throwing it out to the county board of his. How long does it sit there before it comes back to the general fund? Because I don't want it to sit there forever. You know, for years waiting.
Your concern is that if it's not used, that the county board might have the priorities for ARPA funds.
Uh, yes, yes. So so how long, how long does it, does it sit there? Because I think if, if a provider wants a local. Grant after the state round is done, they always have the ability to come back and ask the entire board. For that.
Want to put a time on it?
Malia has a question.
Well, I'm thinking and and maybe Chad might have a better answer, but. It would certainly have to either become a designated fund and this resolution doesn't create a designated fund. Or it would have to go back to the general fund at the end of that budget cycle.
Yeah, so line seventy-two through seventy-four designate that this amends the twenty twenty-two operating and capital budget. So as with all operating and capital budgets, it expires when the budget expires.
Okay.
So.
What does that, tell Brad what that means.
Yeah, well, I mean, at the end of, at the end of this budget year, it's automatically back in.
Right.
Not a non-rapping story.
So as, for example, with the parks and trails, when we took the sale of Lime Quarry Funds, we created a designated fund for parks and trails. That's not expiring unless the board takes an action to clear that fund. This is not a designated fund. This is an adjustment to the capital budget for twenty twenty-two.
That means it goes back into the general fund at the end of twenty twenty-two.
Correct. So then line, I would make a motion to strike line fifty-five. Because that is going to let Polk County make direct payments to consumers and. I just don't think that Polk County is, needs to be in that business. So.
Could just be.
Yeah, maybe residents on fifty-four, maybe stop at the end of Polk County.
Stop it. Okay.
Well, initiatives for Polk County residents, period, and take out the two include direct-to-consumer allocation.
Yeah, so line, yeah, my motion is to strike line fifty-five in its entirety.
So initiatives would still maybe cover the opportunity that supervisor Warren Dahl talked about. That if you come to the board, we can still.
Yeah, this just takes out the direct-to-consumer allocation. I'm not sure how we do that. So you made a motion. Do we have a second? A second that. Any other discussion about that amendment to this resolution?
Seems like we.
Go ahead, supervisor.
It seems like to include direct consumer allocation. So how do they get their money then?
Well, I think Mr. Warren Dahl taking away the requirement that it includes. Direct-to-consumer allocation does not prohibit a future board from deciding that that's a good idea. I think the concern here was. It says to include, in other words, must include. Right, Brad?
Well, yeah, and and so maybe for for clarification, I'm reading it as though. As a Star Wire customer, I can hand my bill to the county and say, pay it. Because that's, to me, that's a direct-to-consumer allocation. And I don't want the county in that business.
But taking that out doesn't limit a future board from saying that's a good idea. It just says this resolution isn't requiring.
And I don't think it, I don't think it precludes anybody from coming in and asking for money. You you know, for whatever it is of the funds that are left.
We asked that question, that legal or to someone here, does the word accessibility initiative for Polk County residents with that? Is there anything in there that would preclude someone coming to us and saying?
No.
We need to do an extension down a dead-end road that no one's going to do it and the, and the telecommunications company isn't going to do it. Unless they get a chunk of money to get down this road.
No, because the idea was that you have, if there's money left after the grants, maybe you have money available for those very things for accessibility. So that wouldn't change the the spirit.
Or a community or a small subdivision or something.
No, that wouldn't change the spirit.
Township.
Okay.
So we had a first and a second on this motion. Is there any other discussion? All by supporting this resolution, vote by saying aye.
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 That amendment, right?
This is just the amendment.
This is, this is just the amendment. All, all nine in favor of this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie. Anything else, supervisor Olson?
Oh, yeah. Oh, line sixty-eight.
You can turn the page back and forth.
I know. Hey, I can't count the straight line, so I got to go back and forth. Uh, the word reasonable, I'm not sure what reasonable is. So I would like to define reasonable, to strike reasonable. Um, so I would like to define reasonable, to strike reasonable and remove it with, uh, straight five hundred feet. In that way, it is, it's five hundred feet, and that's just a number to me. It isn't.
Yeah.
So reasonable distance not to exceed five hundred feet?
Well, I mean, I'm not sure what is reasonable because if, if I ask Dan what's reasonable, he's got a number, you, you know, we've got
Right.
Twenty people in the room, we have twenty different reasonable numbers. And so all I'm saying is pick a number and, and whatever it is, you know.
So whether there is a discussion in general government, Supervisor Olson?
Now, the discussion in general government was based on information that we received from a gentleman over here.
Go ahead.
By putting reasonable, they thought there would be providers that would provide, possibly provide far more than five hundred feet. So why would you limit it at five hundred? And then determine reasonable at the time it was coming forward. That's why that was put in there.
But the general government committee would be determining whether it's reasonable under a particular grant.
So the idea being, if you put reasonable and that's a requirement for a submission, then maybe you got one submission that says reasonable's twelve feet, and another submission says we're gonna give you seventy-five feet. You know, you, you may get, you may get more than you asked for, whereas if you said it, that you're only gonna get what you ask for, if you said it, you may get more if it's truly competitive. Kinda like going to a car dealer and saying, I got fifteen thousand dollars just to, and they say, oh, by the way, uh, before you told me that, you could've gotten that car for twelve, but now it's fifteen.
Yeah, it was the same path you did to start with. So we talked about it and said, if you're gonna be in that spot and you'd be allowed to determine the acceptance of that grant, we can determine reasonable at that point. I don't, I, can someone clarify that? Cause I think once, I think, I think the grant, the grant gets approved, we approve it, it's up to the telecommunications guys to decide what's reasonable. I don't think we get to kick that can again. Unless it's coming back for the second round of money from us.
So, and, and reasonable for me come up because I was in a meeting in the last month, and one provider wanted seven dollars a foot, and the other provider was five hundred feet free and a hundred dollars for every five hundred feet after that. So, to me, that's two providers. One says it's seven dollars a foot, and the other one says it's, it's, you know, I get a, I get seven thousand dollars from one company and, and realistically a hundred from the other. Now, I think we would all agree that the true cost is somewhere in between that. You know, of, of burying that cable, you know, I, I mean. But, so for one company, seven dollars is reasonable. For the other company, a hundred dollars is reasonable. They're both right. To me, if we don't put a number on it, they're both right. They're gonna come in and say, well, this is reasonable to us, this, this is what we charge. It's reasonable.
Except I think, I think that's where the administrator vetting the grants, that's where the administrator, as the grants are being reviewed, is gonna say, okay, your grant says you're gonna go down this road and hit this number of houses affecting this many of people. How many feet of connection are you gonna provide in your grant? And the administrator's gonna, and they're gonna tell the administrator, we're gonna provide X number of feet to each resident. And then you have a definition, and then the administrator vets the grants, and then brings it to you and says they've defined, they're going to go X number of feet per house on this grant. They're gonna go X number of feet per house on this. Because the administrator is not gonna, you know, you don't, you don't write a grant reasonable, you have to write grants with specificity. So they're going to say, we're going down this road, doing this many miles, covering this many feet, giving this many access, affecting this many households, doing this many, uh, leads. Uh, am I right Joe, on how you write them?
I mean, there, there is quite a bit, there is a decent amount of leeway in the grants. I mean, we don't, members of the Public Service Commission, we don't have to define what the cost is to the end user to hook up. I, I don't remember off the top of my head if there's anything in there as far as guidance in the application, but, I mean, I'll, I'll just say I'm not opposed to there being a hard-to-find number if it helps make it easier to be consistent and increases the odds of, of support for the resolution. Uh, in the end, I guess my opinion is, regardless of whether you're five hundred feet free or, uh, seven dollars a foot, if you define, this is, this is the minimum amount we want provided free of charge, the provider could calculate, well, you know, what's our expected take rate gonna be? How long are these drops gonna be? And then bundle that into the grant application itself to cover that, those funds. So I'm.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. So what you're saying is that case is if you put that five hundred feet into this, when you submitted your grant, you might say, I know your provision is five hundred, we're gonna grant a thousand plus so much, any additional feet beyond that in your grant application?
I mean, we could always go further. We could always go further.
But that one, as a provider, you could set that on above the five hundred feet if you desire.
Right, the only, the only thing that I personally would like to see is if the, if the length were defined, that there be a, a reasonable exception to that because you know, there could be a very, very difficult drop that takes a day's worth of work to do. When the average five hundred foot drop, you might be able to do it in an afternoon. So in those extreme situations, maybe there'd be an exception, but then it would have to be an exception that us as a provider would have to have some reasonable explanation of why we're seeking an exception for that case.
So then you put that into your grant, that exception in that case?
Well, I mean, if it's included, it's, I mean, we could include it, but i- if it's part of this resolution, I mean, the state isn't requiring that, but the, if the county requires it, I mean, it would be, I mean, we'd be, we'd be including this resolution as part of our grant submission. So by default, it would be part of our, our application.
Uh, Supervisor Milton?
Something that Chad said, cause it sounds like the reasonable conversation is sort of like, you guys have kicked it around in gen gov. Vince is gonna do the specifics, and we're a body that's supposed to kind of big do policy, so. I don't know, it seems, I'm a little uncertain about whether, that I really understand exactly the number that we should put in there and let, and let staff figure out this reasonable conversation, and, and if gen gov has already kicked it around. Um, I don't know.
I think the discussion at general government was reasonable could be ten feet.
I know, I know, I totally, yeah, I totally get that. I just don't, I don't know if it's five hundred feet or if it's helping out, um, Warren Dahl's family, which is five thousand feet.
Don't you have to map out where you're gonna go? On that, on that grant?
Yes, we mapped out all the roads we would go down, but we don't.
The G I S now has it so that you could take every house, take the average, you go, okay, this house is a hundred and twenty feet. This one's one twenty-five. This one's two hundred. So I mean, if you're gonna go out in the country right now, I can take W G Extreme, put it up there. We could measure every house that you're going down that road, what it would be, exactly.
What is it, what, what would you consider in a rural community and then versus a municipality provider? If you're in the village of Boston Lake, your average drop is gonna be a hundred feet.
Yeah.
In, in, in the county, what's an average drop?
I would say on average is somewhere between two fifty and five hundred is the average. Five hundred covers the vast majority. There are some that are in, there are definitely a handful that are in, that are well over five hundred. As far as getting beyond fifteen hundred or, you know, thousand fifteen, two thousand feet, those are extremely rare circumstances, so. I mean, five hundred does cover, I would say, you know, eighty-five percent of potential people out there.
Got one follow-up question for you. In this resolution and these grants, are these rural grants or are these gonna be covering even municipality, um, providers?
These are for unserved and underserved areas, and per the state definition, uh, it, it, it varies depending on which round and where the funding comes from. But typically, it's an, an area that there are known, that there are fewer than two providers that offer broadband speed. So, in the case of most of these, these are rural. I mean, not many of these go into the villages because you might have phone company and a cable company competing. In those cases, those would not be eligible areas. This is really focused on the people that don't have it at all. And, and this, in an area, an area with zero broadband is going to get more points in their application than an area with one provider having broadband.
All right, so we have, we had a, so what was actually your amendment? Did you, you? You had five hundred.
To re, to remove reasonable and replace it with five hundred feet.
All right. You have a second before we discuss?
Just a comment, if it's not too late.
Oh, there's a motion, so it's too late, but you can bring it up again during.
After the motion.
After the motion, you want a second then? Sure. Hey, you got a second, now you can have a question.
It seems like we're shortchanging the people that unfortunately bought land from the farmer that decided to keep the front forty. That's, we're doing a shortchange in those people. I think it should be by the foot, we pay so much, like you said, thirty percent, or whatever, instead of, uh, putting the ceiling on the foot, footage.
That, could that be developed in that additional funds that we have, maybe to, to do that as a second here versus?
Could be, but.
You know, I know in general government, we, in general government, um, we discussed, um, a, uh, Lakeland did a, uh, project in this area. And, uh, Lakeland, I talked to them. So they had a grant to main that, to lay the main line out, and then there was funds through some other fund. I don't remember the exact terminology where those funds came from, but every single resident on this grant went out. Every resident had it provided to them regardless of the footage it got paid. There was, there was no limit on the footage. You were, they did put to every resident. And we, I tried to discuss it at general government, and we got blowback on that, that the providers wouldn't wanna take this grant if that was part of the requirement to get our money. Uh, do, would you have a comment about that?
The, part of the challenge with these grants is not knowing who's gonna sign up. So, in the case of saying, we want everybody to be connected regardless of footage, I'm not opposed to that at all. I'm not opposed to that. The problem is if we write the grant, assuming that we're getting, you know, every foot to every house, and then we don't have all of those people sign up, then we have fallen short of our commitment to the state of hooking everybody up. And then therefore we would have to give money back or, you know, have our grant amended. So that's, that's the only real issue.
Saying everyone gets hooked up.
And that's the only issue. However, you could say every person gets hooked up. And in the case of unused funds, the providers could come back and say, we got this one person with a five thousand foot driveway. It's, it's gonna take ten thousand dollars to hook this one person up. We'd like approval for this one person. And may, maybe, maybe part of going through every driveway ahead of time and saying, identifying these are the potential issues ahead of time could be helpful.
You have to map it, that's what I'm saying, but.
I mean, it's tedious and time consuming, but.
What I'm saying, you could say, say that every, in the grant, everybody that signs up, hook up along that line will be hooked up for nothing.
If you don't wanna get.
If you don't hook up, you're not allowed to do it later on unless it's at your own expense.
Yeah, that's, I thought that's how.
You know.
Or it costs us X amount of dollars.
Or by the end of the year when the funds expire, maybe.
You have to pay it yourself if you skip it, but I mean, at least you could be written in there that, and if we're coming by, you don't wanna hook up today. It'll cost you five thousand dollars next week, but if you're there when we come by, we'll hook you up.
Yep.
Well, if it, what happens then if they've already gone by, and I wanna get hooked up?
You're too late.
You're at the wrong grant.
Supervisor Olson?
But I mean, we give them this grant of fifteen percent or max of three hundred thousand. We don't get to dictate where they're gonna spend that, you know? You know, we can't say, here's, you know, we, we can, we can say that they have to go a reasonable distance, distance or the five hundred feet. We can't say you have to spend this money getting it to their house. It's just a portion of their job, and they're gonna do their job as, they do their job every other day of the week. It's just.
Yeah, when they cost it, when they cost their grant, if there's conditions on the grant, they're gonna cost it out with all those conditions. So if, if the drop in that area of the grant adds eight hundred thousand dollars to the total cost of the project, and it would be one point two million without the drop, then the total project's gonna be two million dollars, and they're gonna base their grant, they're gonna say, we have a two million dollar project, we're getting X number of dollars from the county enmashing funds, we're putting in this much, we're requesting this much from the state. That we're gonna build that into the overall project.
Right.
Like, I still think five hundred feet or a given number is the only way to make sure that that far gets done, and they're, and they're again, they're gonna put it in the, in the grant application so they know they're covered, and I'm fine with that. But everybody at five hundred, no, they're getting five hundred feet free.
I, I did get an email from Amory Tell on this subject that might be helpful. Um, Mike Johnson from Amory Tell said their average cost for a drop, they average out all their drops, is twenty-eight hundred dollars a drop. The Amory Tell's policy is they provide five hundred feet in installation for flat three hundred dollars. Over five hundred feet, the cost starts going. But that cost, the actual cost, their average cost is twenty-eight hundred per drop, but in their plan, it's five hundred feet plus three hundred dollars for installation. If that helps.
There again, then they're adding it into their grant application to cover that. I mean, and that's still cut.
Yeah. All right, so you got, your, your, your motion and a second was for what again?
Five hundred feet.
Replace reasonable and then replace it with provision of a five hundred foot distance of a drop. Right?
All right. Uh, we had other discussion, all in favor of that, um, amendment, uh, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed to that amendment?
Aye.
Carrie. Are you done?
Well, just one more question in general, I guess. So somebody gets the grant, when, when do we pay, when do we give them the fifteen percent of the three hundred thousand? Before they start the job, at the end of the job, at the middle of the job, just when, when are we cutting, you know, that communication company the check?
It'd be about the time the grant's awarded from the state. I mean, you could, I guess you could designate as a reimbursement, you know, there's two forms of grant. There's either the front, just like we get grant, you either get front-sided for a project, or you get reimbursed for a project.
Yeah, no, and I don't, I'm just asking the question to, to know, you know.
I, well, I, I believe accounting-wise and Gatsby-wise, government accounting standards, since this is a twenty-twenty-two budget year project, and these grants are awarded in twenty-twenty-two budget year, the county would wanna disperse their funds in the twenty-twenty-two budget. Otherwise, we have to carry over by resolutions these funds in the next. So it should be on the front side.
Is there anyone else that wants to make any amendments? Seeing none.
Can I make a statement then after this?
Call the question, roll call vote.
I'd rather. Before.
Go ahead then.
I am gonna vote no, not against broadband or anything, but I'm gonna vote no, it's, this is way too open. Not specific enough for me. In our next, uh, hour or so, we're gonna spend eight million dollars, we're gonna go borrow eight million dollars. Yeah, and now we're giving a million away. Doesn't make sense to me that we have to borrow and then we can give it away like that, so that's only my attitude for it.
Can I ask Mr. Supervisor O'Connell a question? Is there a number that you would be okay with or closer to okay with other than, lower than the one point five million?
I see most of them were like two hundred thousand and that, I mean, if, we don't even know how many they applied, or how many did you apply for?
Well, there's five in the county, right?
Five right now?
Well, there's five providers, and providers may apply for multiple grants.
We don't know how many grants they applied for. They applied for ten, they applied for twenty, they applied for two, one. I mean, they could apply for twenty to get one.
Yeah. No, I'm just asking if you wanted, if you were willing to lower the, the one point five million.
We're still getting money away, and we're borrowing money. In the next ten minutes, we're gonna spend eight million, so.
I don't disagree with you.
Doesn't make any common sense to me at all, but it's whatever.
We will be doing a roll call vote on this. Um, are there any questions? Joe?
You know, we've been, like you say, kicking the can for many years on this. And now it's come to an end, and like, it was.
And now it's come to an end, and like Kim was saying, you know, we can do this, we can do this, we can do this, but like you said, are we a hundred percent sure that we're getting what we are asking for? Is it gonna be enough? Money? That's something I think that has to be gone through again and seen.
Sure, so.
I hate to vote on something that I don't know exactly.
Understand, so let's get that question answered. Do we have a deadline on this, and what is, how mu- how important is the dollar amount of our, is what I hear the two questions? Does that make sense to you?
So the, the deadline, these, this round to, to, to be eligible, we have to have these transmitted by March seventh. So, we do have a tight deadline.
That's prior to our next county board meeting.
Now, with that said, if there was a proposed amended uh, resolution that was expected to pass, that could be included with our submission saying, this, this is a resolution that's expected to pass, we'll follow up with the signed resolution. That's not ideal, but that, that can buy one more month.
What about the question on the amount? What I heard, there was a question about, how important is the amount, this, uh, three hundred thousand dollars per the million and a half we would have to spend, how important is this three hundred thousand to your grant application?
It's, it's fairly important, that out of Washburn County in the last round gave one provider a million dollars. And through that million dollars, they were able to pull eleven million dollars of the last hundred million into Washburn County with that investment. I don't know anywhere else you can put in, you know, ten percent, get that much of a return on it, so. I mean, that money can be spent on a road, on a building, on a lot of different things, but there aren't many other things where if you spend this money, you're gonna have us providers and the state bringing, you know, much, much, much larger sums of money into the county to get the work done. As far as what amount?
I, I can, the three hundred thousand for background, the county administrator evaluated the grants awarded in the last round, looked at the value of the grants and the matching funds, and these are grants awarded, the ones that won, and the number sat right at three hundred thousand dollars as that. That's how the administrator arrived at his three hundred thousand dollars. Because you look at what won, you know, what won the grant award, and then he cost averaged out, and it was like two hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars, I believe, right at three hundred thousand.
Currently, Joe, right now, I think also to answer your question, I believe the county right now, uh, all we participate in is a thousand dollars per grant application of what whole county does today. A thousand bucks.
Yeah, is there, has anybody looked into what these other carriers charge and stuff?
What other carriers?
They put in broadband.
Yeah, I, I think we, you guys have letters on all the carriers supporting this.
But there's a specify what they charge.
Whatever you want charged is what they need to charge.
Are you talking about the monthly service, Mr. Demlin?
No, I'm.
Besides that, too.
Yeah, besides that.
Who, what's the time?
You're talking about what it costs them to ride it to your house? Well, I think a good analogy is, is that everyone has different overhead, right? Uh, and the way I look at it is, we have customers that call our business to build a bullshit. They get a bit from the Amish, they get a bit from our company, same bullshit when it's done, guarantee the Amish boys can build it for about half the price we built it for. Same bullshit. There's a lot of reasons why, and it's not because we overcharge, it's because some companies like, Joe, he's got a low overhead. He's, he's a working guy, he's out there probably putting the wire in the trench himself. And you have other providers that are larger, that clearly have a big overhead, trucks and equipment and a lot of other things, cost that they're, they're charging different rates because they have to.
Problem I'm looking at is down in my area, you take and you go with a mile stretch from County Road X to the county line, you have maybe four houses on a twenty-some?
Right.
That are within that five hundred feet. Otherwise, like mine's football field.
Sure.
Lot of the other ones are the same too.
Right.
So, that's, that's just a problem that we're gonna be.
Well, and, and I think what I've understood with this too is this, this grant is, is basically putting the highway in, and we're trying to get the highway out. I got the same concerns as everybody else, but, uh, I just personally think it's very important that our county supports broadband expansion, which is our priority, but. Supervisor Olson, again?
Yeah, so line fifty-four, Chad, I mean, what would the educational and promotion promotional items be, I mean?
Well, I guess, I, I, an example is, um, I know this is something that we've talked about, Conny's talked about before, is, you know, how do we get healthcare out to rural areas, what healthcare can you receive uh, through broadband, you know? Instead of vets coming into the office to do their, their telehealth that they sit in the vet office to do, could they do their telehealth at home, and, and providing that education to people that, you know, you, you have eighty-six percent of Americans that rely on broadband five days a week, but what about the people that really don't understand how broadband can improve their quality of life, what can do for it? I think that is the direction he's going with that.
You got me. Tracy?
No, I just have one question about it. So, are we guaranteed, if we approve what is here, are we guaranteed as a county to service the areas where it's needed? Or is this gonna be, we'll do a little over here, we'll do a little over there? We didn't quite get to that because we didn't have the funds, I mean, are we gonna equally distribute this? I mean, how, how are we gonna guarantee that our needs of the people who don't have this service currently is gonna be met?
And what do you gentlemen answer that question?
See, uh, funding is for the unserved or underserved area only. And that's been defined, uh, and so that is what the grants are going, uh, applications are going to. They're go- they're going to specifically what you're looking for. The underserved and not served areas in both counties.
And those that, the map, you, you probably don't know this, we got a map early on that had yellow, green, so you're, you're talking about the yellow.
Yellow area.
So like McKinley and mine, Johnstown and yours, Tracy, and then realistically down in Joe's part of the world, kind of the southwest corner.
And, uh, Turtle Lake and Turtle Lake School District had a huge area that was under.
Offer an amendment before we go away?
Right here, it's pretty good size, so.
Then you can call the question.
So the north part's pretty much covered, it's, it's Johnstown, Eber, Osceola, Farland. Right now?
Right. We're gonna do this, we just need to make sure we're getting these areas provided. Is the key.
Us as a provider, uh, first of all, like, a, a downtown area that's got Lakeland and Charter, for example, we're not even eligible to apply to the state for those areas because they're considered, they have two providers off, on broadband. There are some areas that there might be one provider offering broadband. We, while we technically could apply for those, those really aren't where we're looking to go, we're looking to go with our providers. Uh, not only because those are the areas that need it the most, but also that's where, if we build down the road, that's where we're gonna get the most people that are, are gonna benefit. You could build in areas that already have decent broadband, but most people are gonna stick with what they have if it's, if it's adequate, so. It, it really, it really is going to be limited to those shallow areas. Regardless of how the county defines it, it's pretty well defined by the state already.
Do we have any other comments?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Um, I'm following most of, I'm following all of it, but the sound isn't as good tonight as it has been in the past, but I've talked to Lakeland, and originally, every drop was put in if they got an easement. So you take my, just my home, I'm about a third of a mile off the road, they came in here for free. And then John Klatz said, well, we just can't do that forever, so now they charge. And I, it sticks in my mind, this has been going on for a long time, but I thought it was Lakeland was an average of eighteen hundred dollars a drop. And they had one that he told me about that was seventy-five hundred dollars. But in my mind, and I'm just throwing this out there, instead of talking about five hundred feet distances, this and that, it should just be a straight, a straight number that makes everyone equal, and I don't know if it's five hundred dollars, if it's a thousand, then you, you've accomplished helping out the people that don't have it, but there's a lot of people, even if they have assistance, they're gonna turn it down because they think it's too expensive. And I understand all the pros for it, because we have people out here that can move from the cities because they have broadband, and they can run their business right here at home. So, they understand it, but part of this, the public doesn't look to the future and say, when I sell my house, I'm not gonna get as much money because it's not here. So let just a couple comments, I agree with Kim, possibly we're I'm not against broadband, I've been in favor of broadband from the start, you can look at how my computer works so much better, I just don't know if I'm in favor of spending that much money when we're not exactly sure where we're going with it yet. You know, Brad's talking about five hundred feet and not what's reasonable, and I agree with him wholly, it's just, I don't feel like I have enough in- information yet on, on making this vote today.
Supervisor Nelson?
Yeah, so, it's just for discussion purposes, just to see if there's any support, and I, I'm not, I don't care. You know, I support the resolution, I support us doing something, but I agree, it seemed like a lot of money, going from a thousand to three hundred thousand. Um, I would make an amendment. Um, where is the dollar amount talked about?
Do we have amendment?
Forty-three or fifty-nine.
Yeah, Conny?
Nope, there's no pending amendments.
No pending, okay.
Where's the amendment for the three hundred thousand dollars? Line fifty-nine on the second page. I would strike the three hundred thousand and put a hundred thousand dollars in that number. So we're still participating with, um, yeah, I'll just make that amendment, see if there's a second.
Amendment, any second?
Can I ask a question before, um?
You can make a, what, your second, then you can ask all the questions you want.
You have to change, I don't hear, here, I'm not gonna say many, but you gotta change the fifteen percent, you gotta change the whole line. Or a hundred thousand, whatever's last.
No, you don't.
Okay.
You got a grant application.
Is there a second? That's pretty simple, I thought.
A second for that?
Mr. Chairman, could you explain your, um, amendment one more time, so?
This is, so, this is, this is Supervisor Nelson from District Four, not the chair right now. Line fifty-nine of the amount of the grant application, fifteen percent, or which I'm understanding, is then it'd have a max of a hundred thousand dollars. So the county would only be actually extending ourselves out five hundred grand for potential, uh, hit to our ARPA funds. The reason I'm, the reason I'm saying that is I'd like to leave some ARPA funds there because we have a building project we gotta fund tonight, and I'd like to have ARPA funds left to, uh, pay for a building. So that's why I'm recommending it, and I don't know that the dollar amount is super important to the grant, as much as we're showing participation that we are gonna fund, and I think going from a thousand dollars to a hundred thousand dollars is still a pretty significant jump, so that's why I made that amendment.
May I have a second?
Second.
You're in a second?
Did you get a second?
We got a second, comments?
My understanding was that when we went through to General Gov, the reason that three hundred thousand dollar came out is if we were gonna be considered to get the highest batching grants for our county, that number had to be at that level to draw, otherwise, if we throw the hundred thousand dollar out, we probably won't get the grant anyway. That was my understanding of it, as we described it.
Is that, so my question to the chair, is that accurate? Maybe there's someone in here you could ask. Chair, or I can ask that question.
Alright, on general government, you, you're talking about what comes out of general government?
I'm probably, I'm, I'm at, my question is, is, would, would someone be able to answer that question here tonight, uh?
Did anybody here, did everybody hear that? Re-ask that question?
Can I take a stab at answering that?
Go ahead, if you can.
A hundred thousand is definitely going to help a lot, lot, lot more than a thousand. It'll increase the chances of the application being funded dramatically. If we want to all but guarantee these applications that are submitted get awarded, that's where, that's where the numbers that Vince was crunching came out to, that was the number where all the ones that were awarded fell into that range. So, by backing off that much, there's still definitely, uh, a decent chance of the applications being awarded, but the percentage goes down. Now, we never know until the, the board that scores these actually does their scoring, what anybody else put in. But, I will say that there are a lot of counties out there, a lot of townships with this ARPA money, and this is one of the main things they're spending on, so, uh, I mean, as a provider, I appreciate anything that helps.
Yeah, my, my feeling, chair, my feeling, chair, was just that maybe it'd be a little more reasonable, and if it still gives them an opportunity to get the grant, we're on the right side of the issue. And that's why I floated that up, it, should it be a hundred and fifty, two hundred, two hundred and fifty? I don't know, I just, that's why I threw it out there.
I, I think getting close to the two hundred mark is where it really becomes really hard for the ESC, uh, committee to turn these down.
Alright, so that's fine, so what I'll do with my motion, I'd like to ask the chair if I can resend that motion and change it to two hundred thousand?
Need a second.
If the second agrees with you, then you're told.
I do.
Okay, alright.
So can I make a comment?
So it hasn't been rescinded yet.
I, I, yeah, so.
Alright, it's rescinded, now your, your motion.
My motion is to change that number to two hundred thousand on line.
Okay, any comments on that? Is second?
Yeah, you got a second.
You know, come.
Go ahead.
So there's two hundred thousand now, are we the only ones putting in a matching fund? Who else is putting in matching fund?
Depends on who the providers have asked, um, in, in my case.
So we're, you get a million dollars, we're putting two hundred thou, you don't have to put a dime up? Because you matched.
We, so as a provider, we're typically only asking for maybe fifty percent, forty to sixty percent of the project to be funded by state funds. So, we are still committing, you know, the, the other forty to sixty percent.
That's what I want to know.
Minus whatever comes in for assistance.
Never go, and you're a for-profit business, I would assume.
Right.
Okay.
And I can give an exact example if it will help, Lakeland provided me, uh, their budget and income summary for a grant they're submitting for Osceola Alden and Farmington Township. And they are asking the state for one point five five million, the match from Lakeland and the others is one point five five million, and of that, one point four two nine million is coming from Lakeland, eighty thousand from Osceola Township, forty thousand from Alden Township, and they included the thousand dollars from us. So, of the one point five million match, Lakeland's providing one point four two nine million of that.
Us, us as providers are making.
What is their income? I mean, we're, we're, we're an investor, do we get interest in it? Do we get a payback? What's our payback?
I guess if you're gonna, I would say equalize value.
Yeah. I haven't seen the values club that three thousand dollars in all them houses that got it already, so I didn't, our value of the county was up pretty high if, if all these went up that much already, so I don't think that number is very good.
Well, I, Chair, I got one more comment, and I'll be, um, so I can give my own experience, we have an employee that works for our company who lives down forty-six. Highway forty-six. Uh, wanted to stay locally, wanted to move, buy a new house. It took him It took him six, eight months in this market right now to sell his house. Because he does not have broadband at his property. And, uh, he lost opportunity after opportunity to sell his house, he couldn't move. And it was, uh, it was a touchy issue to keep him as an employee that this whole thing. So to me, I've had a real life experience watching a family try to sell a house in Polk County that doesn't have broadband. And, uh.
Can I fill that with a story?
Oh, that's up to the Chair, I just wanted to share that with you.
Okay, we're, are there other comments in, in reference to the amendment?
I just wanna make sure if we know our numbers. Because if Vince went through and crunched these numbers, that we know the likelihood of grants hit, hit, uh, whatever, two eighty, three hundred.
It was roughly in the two eighty range.
I'm a little nervous for us to lower that. And then, you know, I mean, are we, are we in on this or not? You know, I don't wanna.
We need, we need two-thirds of a vote to make this pass. And I'd hate for it to fail because we had a high number that our administrator crunched the numbers when now I have a provider saying that number works. So.
I mean.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it, it, it definitely, even lowering the number definitely helps increase the chances. I mean, it, it, it's up to you guys as a county board, how guaranteed you wanna make this. And also how much funding you want to spend. I personally, if it came down to three hundred thousand and it failed versus two hundred thousand passed, I'd be one hundred percent supportive of the two hundred thousand.
I'm just, I'm from one of the, I'm from the yellow part of the pack.
I understand.
So I got people who can't connect, and I got neighbors calling me saying, is your TV working tonight? And I'm like, no, it's actually not again tonight. So we live that all the time. So I just wanna be all in or, you know, I.
My problem too, Chair, if I may discuss, sorry, Chair.
Don't hear.
But, uh, you know, I, uh, you know, I feel like sometimes my experience here at the county is it's almost like anything, you always ask for more than what you need. And, uh, I just, I'm a little concerned that, uh, again, I go from a thousand to three hundred. Uh, I, I, I'm not speaking for Administrator Nethalyn, but I'm gonna guess he would echo the same thing that, uh, it's important that we pass something. And so I just wanted to give an opportunity to the board that maybe someone that was more inclined to support it would, would get it passed and we don't do nothing. So I, I, I support the three hundred. I just wanted to give us another opportunity to maybe, there may be some supervisors that would be more inclined to not spend all of the ARPA money, or ARPA money we don't even have. Because currently right now, we have ARPA funds of X, what, Chad?
Well, we have four point two five two sitting in the bank. And we have one million thirty-three thousand six sixty-seven not yet committed to that. Then we get.
So how much money do we actually have uncommitted?
One million thirty-three thousand six sixty-seven.
So my point is, is I, I'm saying we're not gonna spend more than we already have. I had a little problem with spending money we don't have, even though they say it's coming.
I'm just saying, yes, that this, it's, we're borrowing money and then spending this much more. We finally got out of the hole and everything. We haven't even decided how much we're gonna keep back yet, and stuff with policies, twenty percent or forty percent. Uh, and now we're spending this, so it's.
Just not talking about the rest of the, uh.
Well, it's talking about the two hundred thousand and stuff, which I think is way too high too, because it's still open it.
The amendment to the resolution is to drop it from three hundred thousand to one hundred thousand, is that?
To two hundred.
Two hundred thousand. Uh, we we have a question on that.
Call the question then.
All the question?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Vows?
Aye.
Amendment passed? Now we're back to the main resolution?
And we need a roll call for this one.
Oh, we're still, and Brad's still making some remarks.
Yeah, I'm not done yet, now that Chris has happened.
Go ahead.
Line forty-three, I would make a motion to take that one point five million and move it down to a million.
You have a second?
Second, Dan.
Motion made in seconded. Any discussion? During none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vows, same sign. Resolution. The amendment. That brings us closer. Vote on the resolution.
The Chair, can we call the question now? That's what you want to ask.
I am going to call the question. That takes a roll call, votes, I understand. Uh, now, do you wanna read the amendments to the, uh, to the resolution, Ms. Clerk?
So the only changes, the first change would now be in line forty-three, dropping it to a million from the one point five million. We're changing shall to may in line fifty-three. Taking out line fifty-five, which is to include direct consumer allocations. The next one is dropping from three hundred thousand aggregate to two hundred thousand. And then, because now we've added lines and taken them away, the lines won't match up to what you have. But in the second to last, therefore be resolved, it would read, um, all proposals considered for approval shall include the no cost to consumer provision of a five hundred foot distance of a drop to a structure.
Okay.
Does that also change the fiscal and legal impact from one point five to the one?
It, it would, and that is something that we can, uh, Mr. Roberts and I can have amended in the final amended version that gets published.
Okay, with the amendments. We need a, what are you, two, three, four on this?
We do, because it's a budget amendment.
Okay, we'll have, now, okay, we'll leave a vote call.
ARPA table. Do I come back from?
No, I'll be the last.
Okay. John's still with us, can we hear him yet?
He tells him to unmute himself.
Then we go to Joe.
Oh.
Rattles?
Yes.
Doug Brody?
Yes.
Steve Wornall?
Yes.
Chris Nelson?
Yes.
Chrissy LeBlanc? Dan Rupp?
Yes.
Mike Pritchard?
Yes.
Sharon Kelly? Kim O'Connell?
No.
Amy Middleton?
Yeah.
Yes.
My yeses? Two no's? Now, if you get eleven, we have, you're in.
Chair, does that mean two-thirds? I can't do math.
I can.
Yep.
Yep. Oh, yeah. Nine to two?
Point, point of order statutorily.
I was gonna say, we better have a point of order, there's fifteen people set their ear.
Two thirds.
We're short of vote.
Of the members elected. It's not of the forum. This is different from a two-thirds suspend the rules.
So it's, so it'd be nine to, uh, we need ten.
Chair, Sharon Kelly just said they need to unmute me. So maybe we.
She needs to unmute her.
That, would that help our numbers?
Chair allowed to talk.
Yep.
Well, the roll call says there's thirteen here, so we have to have a total of thirteen votes. Do we not?
Well, a vote you can't hear by a member present would be considered in the negative, but if it's unmuted.
Yes.
We just asked her to unmute Supervisor Middleton.
Sharon, you have to hit star. Star six on your end, maybe?
Who's missing?
Sharon wanted to vote on this. Mike Pritchard wants to vote on this.
He did, he did. But.
Are you communicating by text with her?
Yeah, I just, I missed it. So the first text came in like forty minutes ago.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
There he is.
Your vote, John?
I vote no on that resolution.
It's two thirds of of the full board, so you need to vote a ten.
So we do a vote of ten, and this brings it to.
There's, is there a boss, Chair, I have a question.
We.
Question.
Oh, yeah.
Um, is there a way to suspend the rules? So it would not require a two-thirds vote?
It's a statutory requirement in chapter fifty-nine.
There's, there's just no way around it?
No.
Two thirds of the city core.
Nope, of the members elect.
Because you're remitting the budget.
Are you having trouble getting unmuted?
What? Your question, she's on the phone too.
Can you hear me now, Mister Chair?
Yeah, we got you, John, got your no vote.
We need your vote on the, on the resolution, the broadband resolution. Can you unmute yourself, or should I put you on speakerphone?
Uh, what do you want me to push?
John, John, Chairman, can, can John, does John know that you voted against the broadband resolution tonight, John?
For Farming?
For Farmington?
All of them?
Already got one. That's what.
I wanna make sure John knows what he's voting against.
He can, I'm just a little bit. If they haven't done it, yes, I would too, I would too, to state.
I, I think it's important that.
I think we're gonna run the.
God, yeah, there you go.
Mister Chair, I did vote no on that resolution.
They can lay it down.
You're voting, John, did, which resolution are you voting no against?
I, on, on the total, uh, on the total amendment.
Okay. The, the total, this is the resolution, not the amendment.
But let me, um, see what the Chair.
I voted no on the resolution.
Hang on a second, I'll just put you on speakerphone.
You don't know what you.
Yeah, I, I heard every word.
Can you hear that, says all your names?
Okay.
Mister Chair, I have Sharon on speakerphone. She can't quite get back to work, so she could file her vote, she said.
How will you, how do you vote, Sharon?
I, I vote yes.
She votes yes, okay.
Okay, we got you.
I'll report that as a yes.
All right.
Okay, bye.
So that gives us a total of how many yes votes? And the yeses and three no's.
That passes?
Passes.
That passed. Well, the resolution passed.
Good, Chair. I like sitting here better.
I'm gonna bring my note up, I, this day longer. Okay, that resolution's over. Take your chair back. Say.
Chris, will you get your call next time?
You want to?
Next, next month, that's my last month.
I'll let you do it.
Sorry, you shut up, you get your call first.
All right. Now we, uh, need a motion, uh, go into committee of the whole. Second, all in favor, I say an aye?
Aye.
Uh, presentation by LHB on bids for Government Center update project. Uh, I do really hope that you guys could keep it extremely efficient and short and not get down into the weeds.
Yeah.
We will, we will definitely try and get through this quickly. Um, I think what I'll do. It's like I can, here, you give me one second. I will focus on a summary of the overall bids that were received.
These were, these were vetted by General Government?
Correct.
I don't think we need the whole PowerPoint again about.
Sure.
Everything.
The history.
General Government.
All right, well, why don't, sounds good. Why don't we, uh, present then the numbers? Uh, we received four bids, uh, as you can see from the contractors listed on the screen. Market and Johnson was the low bid out of those four bids. And you can see here, this was their base bid value, which was all of the bids included, all of the project scope included in that number except for three added scope add alternates. The next slide shows you what the base bid value plus the three add alternate results are. Uh, Market and Johnson is still the low in looking at and analyzing those numbers at six million five hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-five thousand. Um, going on then to the total project budget, just a brief history of, you can see, uh, throughout the design, we were tracking the budget. And you can see here, uh, the black numbers are the bay, of the bid budget. Now, this is, includes owner contingency permits, moving fees, architectural engineering fees and abatement. Um, I've got two different numbers here because based on the comfort of the board. Um, and I did list out for the general government request what the contingency value is. I did confirm and we vetted the numbers with Market and Johnson. We're feeling confident that they have the scope that's included in the construction documents and the specifications. They did confirm that they did not include any contingency within the number with, which is to be expected because it is a hard bid number. And so what we would recommend is in the overall project budget, holding a five percent contingency. Now, this is an owner contingency that can be used for unforeseen conditions. Um, anything that might come up in the code plan review with the state or any, um, increased scope requests. One of those potentially being the precast panel repairs that we're investigating. So with that, we would recommend a total project budget with accepting all of the three add alternates at seven point six five million dollars. That includes a three hundred and thirty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollar contingency, which is five percent. Um, we did review the, the bids, we are feeling confident. Some things that we're gonna be tracking are the long lead times with the industry and the market the way it is right now. So we will be working with Mark, Market and Johnson immediately. Um, once, if, if the board approves to proceed on what the scope would be in getting, uh, shop drawings reviewed and getting materials ordered. Um, lastly, the schedule, we'd be looking to hopefully get some, uh, notice to proceed today. We already have contracts drafted, so those could be issued, um, upon approval whenever that is given. And construction is looking to start in April. Uh, they do not wanna start until materials are on site. So that is why we'd like to get us, get them working as soon as possible. Pro, projected completion for construction is still December thirty-first, but realizing that some of those material lead times will affect uh, the completion, but the contractor is well aware that we are holding them to, to work strongly towards that date. I believe that summarizes my presentation, if there's any questions?
Yes. Let me get here. It went from six point five two two to the next page, seven, six, five.
Yep. Yes, so this, this six, six, five, two, two.
Right there.
Yep, this does.
Why did it go up to seven, six, five?
Yeah, this number does, this is the base bid contractor scope, it's the construction value only. It does not include the total project costs, which that is what that next number of seven point six five jumps to um, right here. This is the total project budget, the previous number is construction value only. So this number here includes the contingency, which is your, your security money of unforeseens or surprises, your permit fees, moving fees, some miscellaneous furniture, and then your architecture. some miscellaneous furniture, and then your architectural engineering fees and abatement if that's needed.
So that's over a million dollars for that part?
Correct. Yep.
Okay, did, can someone tell us how much we paid our architectural and design fees so far? Is our bid on that? We approve?
Correct.
Uh, base, base bid was, was four something with added scope was around six hundred thousand.
That we paid?
We haven't paid so far.
But that's what the engineering cost will be and architectural fees will be.
Correct.
Of that one point one, yeah, so they're.
A big chunk of it, yeah. Yes.
That ain't very soft.
Kind of like hiring a sewer contractor.
It is. Charge it, take all the trees down too, I will, holy shit. That's quite a bit, alright.
My electrical engineer's really expensive. He's on the phone right now, I'm just kidding.
I should have been an architect. Yeah.
Alright, is, is, uh, so this is just a presentation. You guys are gonna stick around for a little while, right? While we get through this, the whole agenda item?
Yep, happy to.
Perfect. So, let's move on real quick here, because other questions might come up. Number twelve, this is something that the general government, we asked for, since we're still in the committee of the hall, is this resolution to discuss, uh, number oh nine dash twenty-two was, uh, that, uh, are we gonna pay for this before we award the bids? We asked the general government is, uh, how are we gonna pay for it? So this is the opportunity, that resolution, their chairman can explain that, would you please?
So, you authorized the borrowing of, up to eight point two million dollars for the project. And this borrowing, if you all recall, is unique in that it's an open line of credit for twelve months, as opposed to taking all the money upfront. So it means you only have to take what you decide to take from it, then it closes. So what this resolution would do, um, it, it says the, the final estimate, and we just got the final estimate, so on line twenty-five, we would fill that in on whatever you guys select as the final bid, you know, with add-ons or deletions. And then you would say the administrator is authorized to use up to X number of borrowed funds for this project. And then is to use X number of either general unassigned funds or ARPA funds for this project. Um, and the resolution goes on to say that there's, there's a caveat in there that if the economy changed or situations changed, if the administrator saw the need to use more additional, more borrowed funds, then was authorizing this resolution, that would have to come back to the board if he wanted to go beyond that, pay for this project. Does that sum it up appropriately?
I, I think it does.
But my question is, okay, so we have all these different options. Where to get the money? We haven't voted on how much money we're gonna save, that twenty percent, forty percent, that would.
So I can actually, I can give you those numbers if you want on what they would be with different percentages.
Say we do fifty percent. How much over do we have in our, in the budget right now? How much is in there?
So if you do fifty percent, your available excess, based on last year's audit, is three point seven seven zero eight two five.
It's eight three seven seven.
Yeah.
No, is in there over the fifty percent.
Right.
And we're thinking we're getting four million in ARPA money.
We'll get another four point two five two.
Four point two. Shit recovered by we borrowed. Oh, we gave a million away tonight. That's right. Gotta borrow some money, go. Alright, that's, I just wanna see where the money's going.
Hey.
So those we got, and then we have, we have these two.
Terminal, or Supervisor O'Connell, why don't you tell us, let's let you start it. You tell us.
Well, I think we should get some money.
Why don't you put all the numbers in there? Let's hear what you think first.
I think we should take out of that fifty percent, we should take two five out of there.
So that would go on what line?
That would go online, it would be ARPA money, it's what we have in our budget.
Chad, where would he put the two five?
Um, if he, uh, two five would go in line thirty-nine. If you wanted to use both ARPA and general fund, we'll just add a line there.
You want.
Say we should take half the ARPA, so we, we'd have almost four.
You're thinking we should put two and a half million of that upon the end of the project?
I would think so. I mean, it's, it's extra money. Do we give it back to the taxpayer? We're overtaxing if we have that much money.
Fine, I just wanted to.
I'm just saying we gotta throw some numbers somewhere, let's put some in there.
Okay.
So that would, if we put two of each in there, that's four and a half. Uh, the total project is seven sixty-five, so we don't have to borrow four, we wouldn't get in debt. We'd actually see the light at the end of a tunnel someday.
So you're saying use, you're saying two and a half million of general fund and two and a half million of ARPA funds that are coming?
Either two or two, yeah, two and two, so we have four.
You're saying two million?
Two and two out of both those other funds. So we'd have four, we'd only have to borrow three six five.
You're saying take roughly half of the upcoming ARPA money that's coming in, half of that four point two five.
Grab, shared revenue that we lost, revenue, so it wouldn't just go in the general fund anyway. But this, if it, if it's allowable to use for. That's what we have to look at too.
It's an allowable use.
Cause then we have our capital improvement plan to knock down too, so we still have money for that.
Hey, there, there, one thing I need to give a caveat, so it's on record. It's allowable use, but you cannot say that we're using this so that we can refund taxpayer money.
Oh, I know.
That, that's the one disallowable, it's the weird thing about.
No, we can't reduce taxes, that would be disastrous for a government.
I, I'm just telling you what the one disallowment is.
You can't do that, we know that.
I, I'm just telling you what the laws make.
What the law says, you can't reduce taxes for your.
Supervisor Olson, you wanna jump in here?
Is that a motion?
No, I just, I, I started with some numbers.
It's just, it's just, let's hash it out now.
Let's just see what numbers wear.
See how much you're gonna put in.
Yeah.
I'm all in with Supervisor O'Connell.
Does anyone else have any ideas as far as making this committee of the hall so anybody else can draw out ideas?
Well, I'm just pondering this thing of putting all of the ARPA money or half the money. I mean, ARPA was, I don't know, I mean, I guess, I like the idea of us not right, raising our debt or, but it's supposed to be for the whole county, like we spend money on it for the whole county.
We are, we're fixing this up, and that, they're not gonna have to spend money. We can't say they're gonna save money, but they are, they don't have to pay for heat, electric, all this.
Well, that's true, true.
So it is for everybody.
Cause they don't have to pay for the excess of the heat loss.
Well, it's better than being for the underserved, whatever, uh, uh, the, uh, broadband, because this is coming to my house, even though they say they're gonna do it, it hasn't been there yet.
I don't know.
But that is at everybody, we, we pay for all kinds of.
Quiet, Joe.
I think this year is the best way of doing it, because it's showing the people that we're responsible for this money and less borrowing is being more responsible.
Okay, Supervisor Olson. Oh, you, you, that was earlier, you agreed.
It was hard, I'm sorry.
You're out.
Chad, we said we were gonna borrow eight point two, up to eight point two. So if we all of a sudden gonna borrow three point five, or whether three point six, or eight, or ten, whatever it is, does, is that gonna affect our rate? I mean.
It's not gonna affect our rate, our rate's locked in. What that will affect is your payment schedule, so many, what, two thousand ten, I believe, we, we set our debt payment uh, at two point four million of debt dollars, and that was a longevity plan that Administrator Frye and Andrea put in place so that it stayed stable, so that we could replace things as they happen. You borrow less, we're gonna pay that off much quicker. And one of two things will happen, I'm trying to do it in my head, I think in, now it'll drop in four years instead of seven. I may be off on that, I don't have the tables in front of me. But, so what'll either happen is, at that time, the tax debt levy will drop or you'll need to do an additional borrowing to keep two point four million stable. Cause we'll continue to pay two point four million a year. That's the plan that we've always had, is two point four million stable pay.
Eventually.
I have a question, Chad.
Yes. So.
O'Connell's proposal in a few months from now, when we get the rest of the ARPA money, cause right now, he's saying bring any additional cash we have down to where we have no more money to spare.
No, no.
Oh, yeah.
No, that was fifty percent, we had, um, what's the amount?
Three point seven eleven.
Yeah. Plus the other fifty percent is what, seventeen million? We're not draining that.
Uh, thirteen million nine forty-seven.
Yeah.
So you're saying that if another important project came along next year, we wanted to do another trail project that could talk a million dollars, we have the money to do it?
Well, we, if, if we didn't take it from, you know, right now, our, our fund is healthy. And I think we're gonna add to it from twenty twenty-one, because we are very conservative. But you'll hear in my administrator's report, use caution, because the economy is changing quickly. Sales tax is already down in January substantially statewide uh, over prior years, so we may have it, or we may hit really bad economic times. And when this borrowing expires, the window on it expires January thirty-first, you would have to go for a new borrowing.
The reason I ask that is, I do know that, that's us, you know, this, the roof over at the Justice Center is two million dollars. So, we can patch it for a number of years. Or when are we, where, where's that two million dollars gonna come from? We gotta put a new roof on the building in a year or two.
It's right there, yeah. We have, we have that thirteen million, there's three over, we're gonna get two, or put some to it, there's two million left over, there's three million dollars that counts yet.
I never follow sewer contractors' math, that's why I like.
We went from twenty, we haven't even raised that yet. It's at twenty percent right now, am I not correct?
It is.
Okay, so what's over the twenty percent? How much is there, is that?
Well, thirty percent, it's nine million, goes about every three million, it's about twelve million, about twelve million.
Twelve million dollars, so we spent two of them, there's ten million left. There's ten million in our checking account.
For emergencies, so you're, so you're gonna take, so we'll have to.
Ten million right now.
Get that out of our reserves, not out of extra cash, it's, you're going deeper into the savings account.
That's, if we went down to the twenty percent that's on the books right now, that we're saying. There's, there's thirteen million spent.
Oh.
Or ten million, twelve.
Can you, uh, make sense? I don't understand. Alright, so.
So have him explain that account, because we're, right now, we're at twenty percent.
So our, our present, our present financial policy, although it's been consensus for the March meeting when we bring the new policies forward, our present financial policy requires the administrator maintain a twenty percent fund balance. Twenty percent fund balance would leave us in excess presently of about twelve million. However, most counties in our area are between forty-five and fifty-five percent in fund balance. Uh, that's, that's how much operating expenses you have for the year, so fifty percent would be six points. So if we raise it to forty percent required reserve, that leaves us six point five million in excess and, and unassigned fund balance.
Okay, so let's stop right there. That's, the proposal is forty percent.
Correct.
So it gives us six and a half million dollars.
Right.
Fund balance, and that is includes the ARPA money right now in that?
No.
No, ARPA money.
Okay, so what you're saying is that we're gonna take out of that, how much? Six million?
Two, two.
You're only taking two out, so you're gonna leave four, round numbers.
Yeah.
And then you're, you're also proposing that we take two million out of the ARPA money that's gonna come here in a month or two.
If it shows up.
Okay.
So we have to, we have to prepare, so if it doesn't show up, we still have that.
That's excellent.
Okay, I get it now.
We're still covered.
Yeah, go ahead, Amy.
So Chad, were you saying that with this proposal, our bond to balance would be below the kind of other counties that are in that forty-five to fifty-five percent?
No.
Well, I mean, at, at fifty percent, we'd still have three point seven million available if we set our policy.
We did not make a recommendation of that, we made a recommendation of forty.
Forty percent, which leaves us six and a half, six and a half million.
And so we could still up at the fif, in the March.
That's below the.
The forty is a little low, but we could still, in March, decide to say, we could say fifty percent. We can, you know, that's, that's only a recommendation.
You're still gonna have reserves of,
if, if you take, uh, if you take two million, we'd still have four and a half million at a forty percent level.
Yeah. Even at fifty percent, there was still three left.
There's still be one point seven left after year two.
One point seven, so there's still, over.
We're not getting into this dangerous low level of. But we're sitting there.
Not today, we're not.
I, I'm really conservative, so I'd rather see fifty percent, but forty percent is a conservative, is a moderate conservative.
Fifty percent, what's that number? That was, that's it then.
For the excess, or what would be in the bank?
What would be, what is fifty percent right now?
Thirteen million nine forty-seven.
Okay, so that thirteen million, that would always be there. We could always draw under a little bit and always have to bring it back, is what.
We'd have to prove, we'd always keep thirteen million dollars of cash, so we can always go get if we had to do it, but it'd take a two thirds vote.
To take it down.
For the board to take it below that.
And we'd have to, we have to not spend any money till it's back to that again.
And if the administrator falls below the set assigned fund balance, the administrator has to enter a probation on the budget, return it to the.
Back to that, so we're trying to stay, that's when it, we might both fifth, or go forty-five.
You might.
I'm thinking fifty's not bad.
And that goes seventy-five.
Because fifty's enough.
Okay. Alright, so, we got, Mo, you wanna talk about this whole project, and, and do we have to do this whole project?
Yes, this, this project's necessary, I mean, this, this, a full scope at seven point six five is, is a good project, it's necessary, it's mechanicals. Um, as we talk about the two point four debt payment we make every year, that, that keeps our taxes level for our constituents. And with the larger projects coming in the future, the, the Justice Center, um, new estimate is, for that roof is two million dollars. That building, right now, is, is twenty years old, so as our debt service gets down, those are our next big projects, is the mechanicals in the, in those rooms, so at that point, then we'll borrow to keep our debt service the same, if our mill rate the same, that'll keep things along for our constituents, so. Um, we're on the right track to keep that the same for, we don't go on a roller coaster for our residents with these large projects.
Connor, you've talked a lot.
I know, but should we have not a maintenance program then to set this up and start putting money in?
That's nothing to do with this construction project.
Sure does, we're, we're, that's why we're doing it, we don't have a maintenance project. We don't have a fund, so we have to borrow. If we put, put money away from day one.
Can we, can we put that on a future agenda for government?
We should.
Okay, we'll take that into consideration.
And, and we are looking at that for, yeah, budget cycle as a line item of two hundred and fifty thousand or something like that, so that we can continually every year plan these projects without having to come back and ask for a large borrow all the time, that we could. Yeah, Mo, Mo and I have already started that planning for the next budget.
So, so that will come to our committee when that happens.
That will come to general government as part of the budget process.
Alright. Uh, Supervisor Olson?
We can use out of that eight point two, in theory, of borrowing capacity to fix the Justice Center, right? Cause that was in the resolution.
It's in the resolution, through January thirty-first to twenty twenty-three, and then the window closes. Anything you wanna borrow has to be borrowed by that time, and then the note locks in place.
But if we chose to, we could get going on that and use
Right.
some of that.
Cheaper money right now.
Cheaper, cheaper money. And.
Only, only, the one caveat, the one.
The one caveat I have.
We've got a really low interest rate on borrowing. Interest rates are going up in March, the Fed has already announced they're going up, which means our money in the bank is gonna earn more money. So, I'm gonna borrow less. Well.
We can't borrow less, it doesn't work that way.
Have we hashed this out enough?
We have to borrow it all or not.
Certainly anyone can make, okay, so what else in the committee of the hall? Is it? Fair update.
So, um, the last conversation that our office had with Rory O'Sullivan, um, the attorney for, for the Fair Society, the, the counties asked, what, what we've been asked to do is propose uh, either a committee or a group of identified individuals to act as liaisons to communicate and have some negotiations with the Fair Board. And, you know, I know that there's an election and a new board, and so committees will change, so you can either identify a current committee, and then it would just, those personalities might change when there's new, uh, you know, a new board and, and new committees are selected. Or you could identify, um, individuals that, you know, if, if they're still here, you continue. It, it's just difficult because of the, the shift, but, but that's where we're, where we are with the fair.
So, I guess I'll start off, I've had a couple of comments directed at the chairs. And, uh, one of the things was talked about was just sending it to executive committee. Now, um, you know, how do we have a, how do we have a good relationship, right? So, one of the things that I did discuss with a few people was, um, if it would go to executive committee, one of the things I feel like as Chair, I would not wanna be on that. I've had too much relationships, been to meetings, and I think to kinda clear the air with bad blood, um, I think the executive committee.
Um, I think the executive committee, if it took the four supervisors that are chairs already would sit in a room. I would recommend that Joe Leosso would also be the attorney in the room for those four people. And then we also request then to clear the air that it would not be the executive team from the Fair Board. That the Fair Board executive team would also re- remove themselves from this discussion and pick four people that they would want to serve. That would bring their attorney, and they would be in closed session to discuss it. So I felt like some of those ideas were very positive, so we could start off with. You know, the best opportunity, um, to bring something, obviously it would come back to the board, so we'd all have to vote. But I think it would give the best foot forward to start off with, uh, fresh votes. And, uh. To speak. And that would, that would be, that would be a, uh, that would be a motion that I would make. Cause that's how we would go forward, and then that can last however long it needs to last. It could transform the next board, so the next county board chair, um, could, uh, accuse themselves too. I think the chair could stay out of it no matter who it is. And, uh, under my chair's report tonight, I was gonna be announcing I'm seeking to be the county board chair next term for sure. So I wanted to just take myself out of that, um. So I, I will not be seeking the county board chair's position next term. And, uh, so I wouldn't be involved in it anyways, but I would recuse even if I got elected and I was on the executive, I would not, uh, sit in those meetings either. So that's, uh, I think a way to move it forward, I don't know if you guys have other thoughts of individuals. But I think then it stays within a committee, and again, you've got representation from the chairs, people that have been on this county board for a long time, and, um. I, uh. If someone else has got other ideas, throw them out.
Mr. Chair, did you have that in a form of a motion?
Uh, we're, and we're in committee of the whole.
And, and it would be just simply then, if, if you moved that after, be sending it to executive. And then Mr. Lozo would reach out to Mr. O'Sullivan and, and decide how we're gonna, you know.
Get together and what kind of meetings you guys would do, and I'm, I'm not gonna set an agenda, I'm not gonna say how to do it. I think two teams could work on it, I think the proposal would have to go back to the Fair Society or the Fair Board and let them, you know, maybe they don't like that idea. But at least we would give them an opportunity to also, uh, start off with a fresh approach and some of the, and some of the, uh, things that have happened in the past, Steve.
Fresh to them because they have a complete personnel change, but the same as they've dealt with all along as they came forward to executive.
Oh, I totally disagree. It is not the same. The same as me, the same as Mo, the same as Malia, the same as Vince, that's the same. This would be new, you don't, this would be four supervisors that are in the executive, this ain't the same.
I, I think I, I see what you're saying though, Steve, cause it was reported to the executive. But I think what Mr. O'Sullivan and Mr. Lozo talked about, although of course, I suppose we would have to put out an agenda, cause you would have a forum of a committee. But it would be, the, the hope would be that we're, we're in closed session then, cause we're negotiating.
Right.
And, and it's just, it's just people sitting down in a room, not at a public meeting. And with their two attorneys, and Mr. Lozo and Mr. O'Sullivan have a, a very good professional working relationship. And to see if they can work something out there, rather than, I think before it was staff, it was, you know, uh, Mr. Roberts and I. Uh, and, um, Mr. Norby sitting down, and it was, it, this, this would be more, you know.
And Steve, I think the biggest concern I have too, as the chair right now looking at this, is that there's six people I think up for reelection. So if we pick you, 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 and you, and you, how many of us here don't have someone running against us? What are you, we gonna start with these guys, and then this is gonna take more than one meeting, I'm assuming. Before you know it, we're in the next term, and all these two guys aren't on the board, or this girl's not on the board, or whoever. That's what I was worried about, is why won't we just send it to a committee, since it's been at executive? And that's where I just felt like I'd be willing to step out of it to show good faith. And I think having the administrator step out of it, and any of the people that have been negotiating with the Fair right now. You know, and I haven't talked to them about this, so this is new to everybody here tonight. But to me, get everyone out of it, that was part of it, and start over. Jay Luke hasn't had any negotiations with, um, um, who else is on executive, Kim hasn't. Uh, John Bonner Price did sit on there, so he's got some history of the fair, so he's got someone there that's got some long term. And who else is on executive, and Russ Arkin. So those would be the four individuals started off in executive, and then after the election, we'd have, however that executive maybe got put back together. Go ahead, Amy.
Are you, was, or is this one thing, maybe the lawyers have agreed on this, are you saying that we should say, tell the fair, they should send, or?
Ask.
Yeah.
I'm suggesting.
Ask too, I think.
I'm, I'm saying we could send this idea to the fair.
We're not telling the fair, no, my question is, we're not telling the fair who they should send, cause you said something like their executive.
We're just kinda saying, I think we should tell them, don't send the same people to negotiate with us as we've been negotiating with. That's the bad blood. Start off with fresh people, but that group can still pick who they want, just like we are. But let them bring the people that have their same feelings, same beliefs, they can pick four people, they're fair society, or whoever they wanna, whoever they wanna pick. And have their four people show up with our four people, each of them with the attorneys. And sit in a closed session and start trying to figure out what it's gonna take to resolve this. Cause I personally wanna see this get resolved, and I want this to be successful, and I'm hoping that we start off on the right foot. And we have new people looking and talking, we might, obviously it's gonna go back to the Fair Board, they're gonna have to approve in their attorney. Obviously, whatever our side does is gonna bring it back to county board, we're gonna, we're gonna have to sign off on it at the whole. These people aren't gonna be given the authority to.
It's gotta get started.
Yeah.
So I think the, the fair should come back with what they think.
Let's see if Joe. See what it had agreement those two people could do, if they can agree on something, that's, that's admirable in itself. And two attorneys will agree. So if we can, if they will agree with this scenario, uh, let's go forward with it, but. We probably won't know who we're gonna have until April. So I don't know if we shouldn't postpone it till April, or at least have the attorneys get together and see if this is gonna be a favorable, uh, approach.
Sure.
To resolving this.
And I think that's all it is, is that we're gonna, if this is a good idea, we think it's at least the start, let's give the attorney direction, right?
Yeah, so I can have, I can have Joe reach out to Rory and say, this is, this is a concept that the county board is open to.
Correct.
If they're open to it, and then, and then, and then bring it, okay.
Tracy, Tracy, what do you wanna add to this discussion?
So if I could suggest, okay, rather than kicking the can after an election, not knowing where you're sitting with supervisors, those kinds of things. Could you put together the people that are currently not, don't have opposition? So like Kim doesn't have, Jay doesn't have, um.
That would, that would be all the executive.
That's the executive, that's why we kept it as a committee. And, and how do you?
Saying identify those individual supervisors regardless of whether they remain on executive next go round.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. Because regardless, it's gonna have to come back to executive or gen gov anyways, if you get past the first initial meeting.
Yeah.
If you can't get past the first initial meeting.
Then the whole deal's off.
Then, you know.
Then it's, then it's gonna go a whole different track.
I'm sure they'll listen to their attorney and we're certain directing ours.
Right.
Move on like.
But would those four identify?
But I won't test my night.
Saying the executive committee minus the chair.
Right. Yeah, you could say no supervisors.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I think that's a good idea.
Doesn't have anyone running against, but Rose is on executive.
Oh, I could go there, are, they don't let.
Okay, nobody run him against, no one running against all four of those guys? Yeah, so those four people are gonna be here on the county board. It's Kim, Jay, John, and Russ, and none of them have people running against them.
So now, because John was on the board.
Yep.
Could you replace with Doug, or, I mean, just so there's not a, a familiarity on the county side?
That would work too, I would say something like that too.
I don't. I, I think now we're picking favorites, but go ahead.
Well, and, and it really doesn't matter who sits on it from either side, I mean, I fully agree, I mean, we wipe out the people. I, I sat in executive for three months while Mr. O'Connell was, was out ill. And, and, and I think it, it is a toxic relationship, but it's toxic on both sides. So I agree, you move, you remove staff up there from it, you remove the, the three or four board members of the fair. And, and then you bring eight, eight people in, and it really doesn't matter who those eight are, because at the end of the day. The Fair Board is gonna have to approve of whatever it is, and the county board's gonna have to approve. So what you're, what those eight people are gonna have to do is leave the board in that meeting and say, we think we can get our side on this. Because without that, it's, it's a done deal. I mean, if one side walks out and says, no way. Then it's over.
Yeah.
Zero.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment?
Yeah, John, go ahead.
Well, I, I think it's extremely beneficial that we have a complete open mind on both sides. And, uh, being a county representative, you know, prior to listening to the, to the, uh, Fair Board. I think it's beneficial that I would represent both sides, and, and I think you know that I'm completely, uh, able to listen to both sides.
Alright, well, we've, we've, we've got some consensus here, it sounds like attorneys know what to move on. And let's, let the attorney start this conversation with that kind of a concept, and see if it's even favorable.
Mr. Chair, could I make one comment, please?
Yes, Doug, go ahead.
Um, this is just, you sit in a chair, and then you're just trying to listen and, and follow along with concepts. And this really started with, uh, supervisor Luke. And I'm in favor of the fact that if you, I haven't got, I haven't got in my mind how to get there, but the smaller the group, the more gets done. So I don't care if you draw, if you draw stars or how you do it, you could pick three of the four. You understand what I'm saying?
Hey, well, let's let the attorneys kick these ideas around, and they'll come back those next one, okay?
Right, and that, and that's, that's a way to handle it, just throw, throw that out there, that's all.
Okay, I appreciate that. Alright, let's move on, we're not gonna solve the fair issue tonight. Um, do we have a motion to?
I'll make a motion.
Get out of committee hall.
Chairman, committee is a whole, recent business county board.
Second, go, all in favor, by saying aye.
Aye.
Carrie.
Aye.
Okay, we gotta take a, uh, five minute, uh, we're gonna take a ten minute restroom break. Okay, uh, we are on agenda item, uh, fifteen. motions to act on matters considered and recommended by committee of the whole as noticed on agenda above. So. Guess, one of the things we need to do then is, the first one would be, let's deal with the, uh, the project on funding. So let's fund the project first, and then let's approve the low bid. Those are the two things we need to do, correct?
Correct.
So. We got our worksheet there. Supervisor O'Connell is.
I'd like to, uh, approve a bid, so we know how much money we need, what if we picked one of the other one? So we better pick.
You wanna, you wanna.
Whatever first.
You wanna pick the total number?
Oh yeah, I think we should pick a number first before we decide. Where are we gonna fund it? We don't know how much we have to fund.
I thought they showed us the bid, you saying you wanna, we didn't have a discussion in committee of the whole of not taking that number. You wanna pick another higher number?
So we should, we should say that, okay, the seven, six, five is the number. That's what we have.
I believe in committee of the whole, that's what we said.
The low bid.
You're approving the, so you're.
Okay, so we have to do that first, so we know how to fund.
Motion to approve.
So we got, we got a motion.
To approve the low bid at seven point six five, does that cover everything?
I'll second that.
Okay, that's, we got a first and a second. Let's, do you have any more discussion about the bids? Seeing none, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Carrie. Project is approved with low bid as, uh, Mark and Johnson. Alright, now. Supervisor O'Connell, do you wanna change those numbers like you just talked about?
I would like, okay, I'll pick the. I'm gonna, what do we start with, line thirty nine is the.
Right.
So my motion would be to put one million in there.
In.
Line thirty nine, from the general government, from the general fund.
From the general fund, a million out of general fund.
And then a million out of the, uh, ARPA.
Fund.
And then the rest we borrow. So line thirty nine would be a million, uh.
I think you put two million in there, and then funded from the general fund and ARPA in equal amount.
Yep. And, and unassigned general fund.
Okay, so line twenty five is gonna have the seven, six, five, is it that? Alright, seven, six, five. Thirty nine would have the one million from both funds in there.
The total of two million.
Yep.
Of money the county has, and the rest, the balance would be funded by the line of credit.
Correct. Do we need to fill these other numbers in too, or?
Yes. Staff is filling them in.
So line thirty four will have five point six five million.
How about line forty three, that'll come separate, that we want him?
Five point six five million as well.
On forty two?
Forty two.
Yep, if, if he, if he, if he finds a modified need, if the administrator determines there's a modified need to use more than the five point six five million. And funds received from the general obligation debt that he has to come back to the board.
Okay.
That number should match on what's in.
Should match on, alright.
Okay, you seconding Amy? We, we need a second, uh, supervisor O'Connell's.
I'll second it.
Jay seconded it, now we can have discussion, Amy?
Chad, can you explain to me that, um. So this is just back to that forty five, fifty five unbalanced concept. So if, uh, we cash out all of our rainy day fund, we had hit a recession, which everyone's sort of inkling about. Tax levy goes down and, and is capped, but everything's gone down, and we're sort of used up all of our funds. How does, how do we get through, uh, a big hit on, uh, something? Another pandemic, or a big tornado, or?
Well, presently at, presently if we were forty percent, even minus the million, we'd be at five point five six in excess above that. If we are fifty percent, we'd be at two point seven million above that.
But, but say what the number is about.
So what is, what would that?
Uh, and, uh, the fifty percent would be thirteen point nine million, forty percent would be eleven point one five million. Every five percent is about a million.
What does this change do, what is that?
Um, this would reduce available access by a million, so you'd, you'd either have, at fifty percent, you still have two point seven million in excess.
Plus the fifty percent is there.
Yep.
Which is, so the, the, the rainy day fund would be how much at fifty percent?
Thirteen point nine million.
We're not touching any of that.
That's cash flow for Chad to spend money, however.
It's above that, that we can, we should spend and not get down under that fifty percent.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're not.
That's good, he's, he applied there. Brad, you had a question?
We shouldn't have taken that ten minute break, supervisor O'Connell.
I know.
He just gave back two million.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Alright, did he lose?
Some guys, some guys just wanna borrow money to know where.
Alright, is that all you had for a question?
Oh, yeah, you voted to give a million away, and I'm trying to say.
The roof can fall in too, and you have to spend, spend one point seven, so I'm a little more comfortable having two point seven in that end number than.
I agree.
Than eating it down lower than what that could cost.
Right.
So I mean, it's.
I think the break was good for O'Connell, he cleared his head.
Not really.
He was brainwashed.
No, because we should, but that, that gets fixed. No, because we shouldn't put that, that gets fixed.
The thing is, is that, people ask me to grant kids and stuff, you know, well, what can happen? It don't make no difference what can happen, we're all going to be in the same boat.
Not necessarily.
Well.
The way you are.
Yeah, she says, well, we'll go to Hawaii live, I said, oh.
All right, so, you're going, uh, how about the people online, Mike, Doug? Any of you guys have any comments about this amendment in this second?
Well, I'd have a question, this is Mike, if you, I'd have a question, if you could break down the. Funding by the borrowing, the reserve fund, and the ARPA. Three segments, I don't know if I got the right numbers for those three.
Go ahead, Jen.
Uh, what they're proposing, Mr. Pritchard, is five point six five million in borrowing. One million in unassigned fund balance, and one million in ARPA funds. For a total of seven point six five million.
Uh, Joe, John, John Bonaprise, go ahead, you had a question?
Uh, no, I didn't, I, I said I, I understood that, I thought it's reasonable.
Is Doug still online?
Uh, thank you, that was helpful to have that, thanks Chad.
Yes, sir.
All right, so, seeing no further questions, uh, we'll do a, uh, I think we can just do a, uh. Voice vote here on this one, all in favor of the amendments? Uh, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same time. Harry, I see you back Doug, did you have any comments? Supervisor Rowdy, did you have any comments?
No, we, somehow after the break, we're sitting here with the screen, but it had been turned off, and I just got back on. So I have no comments. No comment.
All right, um, so that was on the amendment, that was on the.
I thought you moved.
For those numbers to be in the resolution, so, so, uh, we just passed the resolution.
We gotta, we gotta vote first.
So those are just on the numbers, put it in the resolution, so now we need a motion to approve the resolution? Let's just do it, do we have a, do we have a motion to approve the resolution as amended? We got a first and a second, any other discussion? So Doug, you're voting on, did you hear us, what you're voting on?
No, I don't know what I'm voting on.
Okay, Chad, would you tell Doug what we're voting on?
Mr. Rowdy, you're voting on a resolution to fund the seven point six five million building project. Using five point six five million in borrowed funds, one million in unassigned general fund. And one million in ARPA funds.
Okay, thank you.
That was the approved, uh, amendment that passed the board here while you were trying to get on. So now, we're actually voting on this resolution, all in favor by saying aye. Mike? John?
Yes.
All in favor, or all against, say the same sign, aye.
Aye.
Uh, passes.
He did that because I voted against broad.
He voted against the highway shop, too. We're always borrowing too much money. All right, Ray O'Connell?
We are, yeah.
Thank you Supervisor Olson. What do we just do, so?
Seven point six five million dollars, we spent eight six five tonight, so we're doing that.
Confirmation appointment made by the County Board Chair, I have done. County Board Chairs report, I do have a simple little letter that I'm handing out to the board tonight, and you don't have to get it right now. Already said it, uh, my intentions are to the last couple meetings, I've talked to my vice chairs, that I would ask them to cover for me. I do want to be part of the board, I want to discuss things, vote on things the last month or two, if need be, I've asked them to step up and cover. And I'm also making my announcement tonight that I will not be seeking chair for the next term, but I am seeking to be back on the board with you all. Uh, that's all I have under my, oh, I also under my chairs report, I do want to say that I attended, along with Gay. Our state representative, and with Supervisor Olson, Clam Falls. Community had a celebration, and I don't want to steal the thunder, Brad, if you were going to talk about it. But I got to tell you what, it was the one thing that I got to say as a chair that I was most proud of, to go to a community. That was overwhelmingly thanking us, our county board. For saving a community, and saving a resource like Clam Falls, and, uh. It was probably one of the best moments I've been, uh, a part of on this county board, so I want to thank supervisors that supported that project. County administrators report.
So, we, uh, as part of our updating of technology and public access. In April, you will see a new software for the minute taking, the agenda, the video. It will all be in one place, uh, the agenda will appear for the public, it'll be timestamped, so if they want to hear about. The building, they can click on that, it'll go straight to the video and they can watch that piece, not have to watch the rest. The new thing called civic clerk, we put that in the budget, we're launching it in April, at the committee meetings. So that's very good for public access, public ease, also for supervisors. Um, it also saves some time in the clerk's office. Our new CJCC coordinator started on January twenty seventh, she came from Sawyer County as their CJCC coordinator. I think she's doing a stellar job, she's meeting with police departments which we've never done before, getting them involved. She'll meet the Public Safety Committee at the, uh, next Public Safety meeting and introduce herself there, um. The CMS mandate, so everyone knows the OSHA mandate for the vaccines were struck down, but what remains. Is the Center for Medicare and Medicaid mandate, affected by that are, is golden age manner in all of their. We have to be at a hundred percent compliance by March twenty eighth, we're at ninety one percent, so that's good news. Compliance is, they are either vaccinated, or have received an approved religious or medical. So we have till March twenty eighth, as of yet, we haven't lost staff at GAM due to the mandate. Although we are at critical staffing at GAM. Uh, GAM, nursing homes as a whole are having a very, very difficult time keeping anybody there, GAM. I, I talk with Dana almost daily, that leads me into staffing as a whole, the county like all employers. Is struggling with staffing, we have twenty eight positions posted right now. It's just a bad market for employees, there's not enough employees and everybody's higher. But we do a lot of good things for our employees, um, this year. You know, we made a lot of improvements to, uh, benefits, we reduced health premiums both for the county and employees, because of how well the health fund is doing. Um, we increased our dental coverage, we increased our mental health care for employees. We increased our health savings account contributions for employees, and we provided social engineering insurance, identity theft insurance to all employees. Um, so we do try to stay up to date with benefits, try to keep our raises gauged, as you all recall, we gave a two point nine percent raise. But we try to keep our benefits very competitive, just stay cutting edge, but just be aware, we have a lot of open recruitments right now. Because we're facing the same thing everybody else is facing. Um, we've received the architecture and engineering bids for Clam Falls, Atlas Dam, and the recycling center. Mo is going through them now to present committees, so those will be coming to the committee next month, right? So, those are moving ahead. The economy and finances just, you know, we, we did well in twenty twenty, we did well, it looks like in twenty twenty one, because we were very conservative. We had all this extra money coming in, but we just need to, you know, stay conservative, because first month sales tax are in, and across the state it's down. As inflation goes up, sales tax goes down, because people don't have extra money to spend on things, they buy in the essential. So I just, you know, I urge everybody as we progress through this year and get into the next budget season. Conservative has kept us healthy where we are now, we're going into an uncertain economy with really high inflation, so. It is, I mean, that's a very good point, but you know, the, the shortage is having an impact as well, even if you got money to buy, you can't buy it. So sales tax is down for the first month, we don't know that that is going to trend for the year, but across the state it's down, and I think it's a good indicator. So I only say that because we're going to have budgeted costs that come in above budget for things like fuel. Uh, equipment, you know, heavy equipment and vehicles are coming in way more than we expected, the ones we're able to get. So we're already going to see some increases because of inflation, so be aware of that, and lastly. Uh, B and R approached us about a partnership for the North American Wetlands Conservation Act Grant. Specifically, it's the, uh, Wild Rice Grant to protect marshlands and the way it lands, and preserve them, it's a federal grant. We're partnering with them, it doesn't cost us any money, um, but we, we partner with them, and they take. One and a half million dollars of the money we're spending on the Clam Falls Dam, and they consider that a match under the federal grant. And it allows them to get federal money, it does not bind us financially, it also does not bind us. To keep the dam, in the event the dam failed, we could still take the dam fail. But I told them I wouldn't sign the letter, which is due tomorrow, and find report the board that we were doing this. But that is a really good thing that came as a result of Clam Falls, I think. So, that's all I have.
COVID update, is it still around, Tanya?
There are a little, then a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, we're happy to see the, the numbers, um. Looks like, uh, our percentage of positivity is about eleven point eight percent, where last month it was twenty seven percent. So we're going in the right direction, I want to see that keep up. Um, testing has slowed way down, we've reduced hours, we're just not getting the people coming through the drive through, um. So we're, we're tightening back on that. Um, vaccines are also slower, we're doing them in-house now. Um, so we're, we're hopeful, we're watching CDC every day to see, um, when we get to a substantial rate. We're still at a high rate of transmission in the county, but it, the way, the rate that we're going, it's heading to be substantial here pretty soon. And then that's when the mask mandates or the recommendations for masking, there's no mandate, but the recommendations will. Effect a little bit more normal.
Thank you, question?
I asked you one question.
Yeah.
So all these home kits got sent out, do you think that's why it's went down? So, they don't have to call in and say what the results are.
We, they are not.
So it's kind of false that they sent these out to everybody, and if I've got COVID, I'm not going to tell you.
You don't have to tell us.
We have to tell, so why come and get one, so I mean, it's kind of a false DA, we're, we're going down.
Right, and I, I mean, there's some, some debate on how effective, um, or, uh. Not effective, but, um, accurate, they are, um, depends on when you're testing, how you're testing, all of that. You could get a false positive, but we don't know.
Yeah.
All right, one of the things I think we'd like to announce too is that, I, I believe we've talked a little bit about is that maybe Tony doesn't have to sit here till the end of the night. Give us the updates.
Yeah.
Well, it didn't really get changed, but next month we're going to have directors talking about. It never got changed, someone asked to change it, I didn't change it. No, we're not going to put, we're not going to put one person in front of everybody else, because she didn't want to stay. But my point is, is that all this information is in committee. You really want to know something about COVID, watch the committee on the Health Department, because it's the same stuff. I think everyone's getting a little tired of COVID, including staff. So, I'm, I'm asking that, any updates be done by the administrator, and it's not going to be on our agenda, unless there's some big issue pop back up.
The bag's under her.
Is it true that the, the government sent out tests are recalled?
No, um, and you had to order those tests, the free tests, so you had to sign up for it, they didn't just send them.
I just heard there was a recall, then I Googled it, and there was some kind of a recall, but not the ones I received.
It was a different kind of test, we worked that way. Right, yes, hopefully, I mean, I really, I really don't want to have to do this report, so hopefully, you know.
Right, yeah. Thank you, Tony, very much.
And a test, just get in the Navy.
Um, Chad, I don't know, we got the substantive use scorecard, can you just say it's in the packet, move on?
It's in the packet, the new format that the.
Thank you. Now, it's Mrs. Supervisor's report from meetings attended, does anyone want to talk about anything?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, sure, Doug.
Uh, I attended the Bone Lake Management District Meeting, and I could go on about the Shoreland Ordinance changes. But they moved, that board moved us from the bottom of the list to the first, so we could get our. Our speed, we could talk about what we had to talk about and go home, because otherwise we sit there for an hour and a half, and we don't really understand what they're talking about. So, I just wanted to bring that up.
I appreciate that, I also talked to our boss, like, we have this about. Uh, the great work that I believe Environmental Services is doing, and the staff, and Environmental Services, Bob and Jason, with. I think it's going to be a very, very positive move on the county's part, on our Shoreland ordinances. And, uh, over development of our community, so, uh. I take my hats off to you guys for getting it done so quick, and we're going to have that on our agenda next month. So I know Environmental Service is having a public hearing next month, and I think it's one of the biggest moves that our county made, and I appreciate it. Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.